Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to our regular session of the Galt City Council meeting for February the third, two thousand and twenty-one. Due to the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic emergency, we have to continue to handle our city council meetings much differently than we usually do. For protection of the public and our city staff. I'm going to ask. Our city manager in a brief moment to give an explanation on this, but first I have a message from our city clerk, Ms. Hubert.
Uh, good evening, council members. Um, just to let you and the public know, our live streaming is not working right now through the website. The video, however, will be posted tomorrow on the city's website. And it is available for viewing right now through our Zoom that will um list the code two here in a moment.
Thank you, Tina. Mr. Hines.
Yes, good evening. Uh, the meeting, uh, this meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted by teleconference slash video conference. In compliance with the state and county stated stay at home orders. And as allowed by the governor's executive order N dash twenty-nine dash twenty. Which allows for deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. Members of the public will see the council members and city staff who are appearing via remote videos slash telephone connections. City, city council meetings will be held virtually by teleconference or video conference only until further notice. Today's agenda states that rather than attending in person, residents may submit written public comments via email. To pubcom at city of galt dot org prior to the council meeting. Any written comments that were received will be read out loud during the council. Meeting, city council meeting by the city clerk on the appropriate agenda item, subject to the customary five minute time limit. Unless the same individual also appears and requests to speak live during the meeting. We will take the live comments first and then the written comments will be read out loud. We are also using the Zoom webinar format, which allows the public to provide live public comment. Members of the public may use the link to enter the webinar as attendees. They should also be able to raise their hand or use the raise their hand option in the Zoom webinar to let us know if they would like to speak. And should do so when the mayor announces the time for general public comment, or when the specific agenda item is called. If your comment concerns an item on the agenda. We request, as we typically do in person, council meetings. That speakers provide their name and address when they are called on to speak and their line is unmuted. But doing so is not required. Attendees should also see the lower their hand, lower hand feature if they change their minds and do not want to speak. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Would like to now call the meeting to order. Tina, if you would do a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Yeah.
Councilmember Papino.
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. But ask that everyone please join us in a silent prayer, followed by our flag salute, which will be led tonight by our interim police chief, Mr. Kalanowski.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Could I just um ask for us to remember retired captain from the consumers CSD fire department? Captain Whiteley, he passed away last night. And he had a long career with the department and Kevin will be missed by many, but I just would like to honor him tonight. With the silent prayer.
Absolutely, thank you. Please join us in the prayer now. Thank you, everybody. I would ask our interim chief Brian Kalanowski to please leave us, lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tina, if you would please read the replay statement.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable fourteen. The local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned at webcast and webcast at W W W dot Zach Metro cable dot T V. Today's meeting will air Friday, February fifth at nine A M and Saturday, February sixth at nine A M. A DVD copy is available for checkout from the Sacramento Central Library.
Thank you, Ms. Hubert. We will now defer to our city attorney to report from our closed session, which we had prior to this meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. We have no reportable action.
Thank you, Ms. Steiner. We'll now move on to our next item F. Agenda approval additions and or deletions. Do I have any items from any council members? Okay. Then we will move on to item G presentations. Ms. Hubert.
Okay, um, that is actually a Parks and Recreation, um, Mondo or? Jackie.
Um, good day, good day, Mayor and City Council. I'd like to uh introduce Jackie Garcia, our special events manager. She'll be giving the presentation on our Winter Bird Festival.
Okay, alright, good evening, Mayor and City Council. First off, I would like to thank you for allowing us this opportunity. To share this year's virtual winter bird festival. This year, our winter bird festival uh was challenged due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Quickly, our winter bird festival committee quickly adjusted our annual festival to create a virtual experience so the viewers. Would be able to enjoy this festival um at their home. With those challenges in mind, we were made, we made it our goal to provide an online experience continuing, continuing the Galt traditions of connecting the community to nature. And growing the knowledge and the love of birding. We can go to the next slide. To continue this event, we want to make sure that we recognize and show appreciation to the tremendous support of our sponsors and partnerships. Kelway Sacramento Audubon Society, Save Our Sand Hill Crane, Consumers River Preserve, and of course, the Winter Bird Festival Committee. And next one. With that. We have our virtual experience tours and activities, which this year are free and a memorial memorable virtual experience that we will provide. To the community and um outside community attendees. This year, we are focusing on art, providing bird drawing classes. Uh, which is an important part of the Winter Bird Festival. Art has always been um a feature for the past fourteen years that we've had this event. Where we are partnering with local schools to provide students the ability to submit art drawings and. Possibility of a chance to win and display their art. Um, of the bird on a T-shirt that we sell at our winter, winter bird festivals when we are live. So this year we will be doing that again, and we have um continued again the relationship with the local elementary schools. In addition to that, John Mayor Laws, who is our keynote speaker, will be providing two drawing bird classes. These bird drawing classes is our focus to make sure that it is a wonderful way to make ourselves look more carefully at nature. This class will be focused on nature journaling and bird drawing, which will offer a fresh new way to experience birds and familiar. Scenes around our area. No prior experience would be necessary and all beginners and advanced classes will be available to anyone. With that, our keynote speaker, who is also assisting us with those drawing classes, John Mayor Laws. Is a scientist, educator and author who will help enhance our virtual festival by connecting with. Nature through keep illustrated nature journals and understanding science. His work will bring science, art and mindfulness together and hopefully capture what we're looking for as part of our goal. Now I would like to introduce Sage White, who is from the recre-, who is a recreation specialist and volunteer coordinator from the Consumers River Preserve. With her help and her guidance, she has provided us an outstanding virtual um tours that will be featured on Saturday. Um, and I'm going to have her share with what she's providing and we just appreciate all her help with um this festival this year.
Hi Jackie, and thank you for that. Um, my name is Sage. I work with Sacramento County. I'm the recreation specialist and um. Communications outreach volunteer coordinator at Consumers River Preserve. Um, this year, since we can't do in-person tours like we normally do in the past. Um, we have, I've created three different tours that people can experience virtually. One is out of step birds tour. This looks at some birds that have different kinds of cycles than. Um, normal birds and it kind of explores that and within the preserve. And then we have another tour that takes um the viewers behind locked gates at the preserves into areas that are not generally open to the public. So that they can see a different kind of scenery and then learn some history and flora and fauna at the preserve. Um, we've also created a new driving tour. This is something that people can use to drive around public roads. Uh, the Consumers River Preserve is very expansive. It's over fifty-four thousand acres. And a lot of public roads wind through it, so this tour is designed to guide people through that so they could do a. Different wildlife viewing and kind of see what it all encompasses. Um, and then we are going to be sharing a three-part tour series that takes you along our river walk trail and teaches you about some of the history. Um, the native Miwak people and some more flora and fauna. So we're really excited to provide. Um, the festival with these tours that I think it'll be a good experience and really allow people to um. Enjoy and experience these tours, uh, more so than they would have in the past because these are going to be available to absolutely everyone. So um. I think it'll be a really great event and thank you for letting me share.
Right, so thank you Sage, we really appreciate it. And like she said, we um, this year, our winter bird festival has received a significant number of attendees. Than the past couple of years, so we are really excited um that we have a lot more attendees signing up for these activities. Again, I encourage residents and other communities to sign up for a wonderful opportunity to view um these tours and take advantage of the several art classes. Classes available in the comfort of their home. This will be definitely a free and memorial virtual experience. And um, if there's any additional questions or people are interested in signing up, we ask that you visit the website or feel free to contact me directly. Um, and at this time, I, we will take any questions if you have any.
Do we have any questions from council? Okay, well, I would just like to say thank you, Jackie, and thank you, Ms. White and Armando and and all the staff that went in too. Um, obviously it was um very difficult to try to pull off a successful event and and everything we're dealing with. But it seems like you guys um uh have done and are doing a really good job, so I'm sure there's people that appreciate that. So thank you to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further questions before I move on to our next item? Okay. All right, we'll now move on to item H, our public comment. Ms. Hubert.
Under Government Code Section five four nine five four point three, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency and social distancing guidelines, public comments may be submitted via email to pubcom. At city of galt dot org and will be read out loud, subject to the customary five-minute time limitation. Also, members of the public may participate electronically via H T T P S colon forward slash forward slash. U S zero two web dot zoom dot U S forward slash J forward slash eight eight two one five four eight one zero four one. Webinar I D eight eight two one five four eight one zero four one.
Thank you, Tina. Do we have any written public comment?
I have none on non-agenda items.
Okay, Ms. Roderick, or do we have any hands raised online?
We have no hands raised online.
Alright, thank you. Then we will move on to our next item. I reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions and committees. We will start with um. Item one, the League of Cities for New Mayors and Councilmembers Academy, and then we'll go around the group. So um. Start with Vice Mayor Sandy. Did you attend any of these sessions this, this year, Vice Mayor?
No, sir. I think you attended all.
I did briefly, yeah. Councilman Papano.
I did attend um. And some of the beauty of it being remotely is I uh have some that I can still attend since everything was recorded. Um, but now I had, you know, the downside of it, uh, it didn't provide what these conferences normally do with a chance to kind of talk one-on-one with uh with people. Um, but it did, as I said, um, you know, provide the presentations and I think it was a, it gave a really good overview. Um, in kind of the, a little bit of the finer points of relationships between council, city manager and staff and so forth. Um, and it gave a uh pretty good overview of finance, which I'm uh thankful was recorded, so I can go back and uh. Get a, get a second look at that. Um, so I, all in all, I think it was a, it was good conference.
Thank you. Councilmember Vandenberg.
Yeah, I would echo a lot of what Councilmember Papano said. Uh, I'm glad it's recorded. Uh, a lot of it was during the, the middle of the day when I. Couldn't necessarily get the time I needed to watch it, so that's good. Uh, it all gets recorded and um. They had a session on the Brown Act, which everybody should probably be, consider reviewing uh certain things like. You can't like a single item posted from another council member if it has anything to do with the city. Cause that, even though it's two individuals, it could possibly work its way into a serial meeting, so it's just something to pay attention to and. That's about it. He covered everything else.
Thank you, Councilmember Vandenberg. Councilmember Lozano.
Yeah, I did not attend. Um, but I did attend a CACOG um board meeting on the twenty-first of January. Um, we have twelve new directors that were um joining us. I think I mentioned that before, our chair and vice chair were sworn in. Um, the chair is Bonnie Gore from um Placer County. And Rick Jennings is the vice chair from the city of Sacramento, uh, went over the two thousand twenty-one work plan. Uh, some advocacy updates and things like that is real, really an orientation. Um, I, I have the opportunity this year to be a um. A board member buddy to a brand new director, um, and so I look forward to that. Um, and then just one other thing to report on, uh, I attended the GSEC Champions Program uh webinar on the twenty-ninth. And um, I highly recommend that all the council members and city staff uh join the next one. Uh, or next one of the two. I think there are two more sessions um coming up, but we got an email on it a few weeks ago. It was a pretty, pretty interesting. Learned a lot about um what GSEC is doing uh for the entire region and um. And uh, the work that our uh city manager is doing. Uh, he was actually uh singled out and named in part of uh the presentations, so. Uh, he's out there working and getting his name out there and and doing what he can for gold. Uh, they also um talked about what the economic development managers are doing. So Amy Mendez and and all the work that she's putting in in the region. Uh, the interesting thing was is uh they did mention. How Galt has a significant industrial area that can be developed and so uh all of the. Uh, the different jurisdictions that were there know now, or if they hadn't before. Uh, and about, about what we need economically here in Galt and so. Um, one of the interesting things I just wanted to kind of point out was, and I didn't realize this, but. Uh, they put up a slide that that mentioned all the cities and jurisdictions in the, in the reg- six county region and. Um, and how many, what percentage of the residents of those, those jurisdictions worked within the, in the jurisdiction they lived in. Uh, surprisingly, uh, for, again, some may have already known this, but twenty-eight percent of our residents actually work within our city. Um, but that seemed a little high to me. Um, and I'm sure it's a lot higher now since uh, since COVID and and many of our. Um, citizens are working from home. Uh, so I, I find it interesting that, you know, uh, that, that little piece of information really can help drive what we do economically and and uh. In terms of promoting business and stuff like that. So uh anyhow, if you get an opportunity, I think it, I think it's well worth the hour and a half. Time and uh, uh, you know, to hear the presentation as well as um. Be a part of the breakout sessions and and so uh, like I said, highly recommend it. And I think that's all I have uh for. Um, reports out on boards and commissions, so thanks.
Thank you, sir. And that is those interesting data that you gave us. I would, I would be interested to see if we have. Any prior data like pre-COVID that we could cross, cross-reference that too to see. Um, but that's, that's an interesting statistic, so. Yeah, thanks for sharing that, Rich. Um, since we didn't really cover other boards with something, I'm going to circle back real quick before I go. Um, Vice Mayor Sandy, did you have any reports on boards, commissions or committees outside of League of Cities that you would like to share?
Yeah, the only thing I did attended on January twenty-fifth, uh, South Sacramento Conservation Agency. There's was the first meeting and that's just the introduction. So there's nothing to report, but I certainly will more depth in my next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Papano, did you have any additional items?
Yeah, we had our first meeting on the uh Air Quality Management District. Um, being the first meeting, it was uh largely routine. Uh, we kept the chair the same and most of the leadership the same. Um, got an overview of where we stand uh with the COVID and we've got a, a bit of a deficit, so that's going to be one of the first things up. To deal with. And then I did have another, um, it was kind of interesting, Ranch Cordova. Um, mostly driven by the fires last year. Uh, they had a lot of inquiries about air quality. Um, and the best advice that Air Quality District could give them specifically was if it smells like smoke, you probably shouldn't go out. And if you look at the Air Quality District map and the sensors located all over, they're kind of in a big. The open space where they didn't really have any localized data and. They put into place a program where uh people volunteer to host a low-cost air sensor. And share that data publicly with the system, so it supplements the regulatory ones. And I went to look at a map for Galt and we have one sensor over off of Simmerhorn, but it, it likewise leaves some, some pretty big swaths. Uh, you know, if people wanted to see the, the localized uh information, so. I plan to research a little bit more and uh see how they implemented their program and and see if it uh could be something that would work down here. Generally, they said these sensors run two hundred and fifty to five hundred dollars, so they, they truly are a, a low-cost thing. Well, that, we'll report back when I have more about that.
Thank you, Councilmember. Good information. Councilmember Vandenberg, anything additional?
No, that's it.
Right, and since Councilmember Lozano had finished with his, I believe. I will move on to myself. I did attend um just two sessions earlier in the League of Cities, which I think I spoke about last meeting. I had, don't believe I've attended anything between last meeting and this. Um, it was the initial um uh skit that they do, which is very uh fun to watch and informative about the function of the council and and protocols and things like that. Um, I was wanting to uh view the social media session, which is always very good. Unfortunately, it, it fell um in conflict with. Um, participation on the uh Humboldt Court um thing that some of us attended. On that, so I do plan on going back and watching it though, um, as, as you guys mentioned, it's recorded, so it is a good one and I recommend other councilors, if you've not seen that one, it's very good. Yeah, um, one of my favorites. Um, other than that, I did attend a um. Youth Commission meeting last night, and that was my second one since I've been in that position. It's uh very good. Very interesting and uh very fun and a lot of great uh criteria shared, a lot of great ideas. And uh, just interesting how the, the youth commission operates as a very efficient little machine, so. Uh, I look forward to those meetings and uh council member, uh, X, I'm sorry, ex-council member, um, Lamson was. Uh, there on our behalf and and uh she did a great job as well. So that's all I have to report. So if we have anything else from any other council members before I move on to the next item. Okay. All right, then we will move on to. Item J, which is our information consent calendar. It is recommended that. Items one through three be acted simultaneously unless a separate discussion and or action. Is requested by a council member, since we have no items that were pulled, I will go through our list. Item one is the minutes of the regular meeting of January the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one and special meeting of January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one. Item two is receiving file warrants for period ending January twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. Item three is approval of the final subdivision, final map and subdivision improvement agreement for Dry Creek Oaks. And that uh contains the resolution approving the final map for Dry Creek Oaks and the authorizing the final, authorizing the filing and recordation thereof. Authorizing the city manager to execute subdivision improvement agreement, including the conditions of approval. With CRV Investments LLC and the filing and recordation thereof. Do I have a motion to approve these items?
So moved.
So moved by Councilmember Lozano.
A second.
Second by Councilmember Vandenberg. Tina, can you take a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papino.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Hi. Item passes five zero. Do we have any? Comment on this item? Do I have to ask for a comment on this item before we go on? Forget, no.
Uh, no.
All right, moving on to item K, schedule matters, notice of public hearing. Ms. Hubert, do we have any? Tonight.
Uh, not this evening.
Thank you. Moving on to item L, a regular calendar. First up is our treasurer's office, treasurer's report for a period ending twenty twenty. Mr. Farrell.
Yes, thank you very much. Mayor Farmer, city council members, general public. Um. I just like to uh first start off and just talk a little bit about interest rates as I, as I usually do and um. With interest rates, as you know, are uh, they're down to a, a record level. As a matter of fact, uh, today's uh two-year treasury note. Is zero point one one percent. Um, a five-year treasury note is zero point four four percent. Uh, just the other day I saw a survey of the top thirty banks in, in the United States. And what they predict those rates would be at the end of this calendar year. And those out of the consensus was a two-year treasury note would be zero point three one percent, so an increase of twenty basis points. And, and a five-year um treasury note would be zero point six five percent, which is again about twenty twenty-one basis points, so. All the banks believe that the interest rates are going to pretty much stay pretty fairly level. Um, I do think you're going to see a little bit of inflation though, the tick into our economy. That's, that's pretty much what the consensus is also. Um, I also want to give a, a local bank update. So a year ago, prior to uh COVID. We had, of course, four, four different banks at six different locations. So I want now, a year later, I want to go through those. So first, Wells Fargo um. Nationwide are closing some branches. They're, they have closed so far about six hundred and. Nationwide are closing some branches. There, they have closed so far about six hundred and fifty branches nationwide. Here in Galt, there were two locations a year ago, one in the Rayleigh Shopping Center, or I should say the Rayleigh's Grocery Store. And one, of course, on C Street. So. Wells Fargo has closed the one in, in the Rayleigh, uh, the Rayleigh's Grocery Store on a permanent basis. They're not going to return. So we still have Wells Fargo, but it's only now down to one location. Um, Banner Bank, which is also on C Street. During last year COVID, they closed for about a seven-month period. They have reopened, um, but drive-through only. And of course, if you want to go inside, you have to make an appointment. Um, Union Bank is, uh, they, they were in the Safemark Grocery Store. They have closed on a permanent basis. They are not going to return to Galt at this point. So, and then Farmers and Merchants Bank are, are local community bank. They have two locations. Both locations have stayed open. And you can walk in anytime. You don't have to make an appointment. It's just business as usual. So that's where, that's our local bank update, but it's, uh, as you can see, COVID has definitely affected us quite, uh, quite a bit. Um. I also want to talk about the unemployment rate for, for Galt. So Galt has a currently an unemployment rate as of December, uh, nine point nine percent. Now, in relationship to the county of Sacramento, the county has a, an unemployment rate of eight. Eight and a half percent. So we're a little bit above what the, uh, what the county is in general. And, um, lastly, if you're a homeowner, you may be interested in this, of course. So. At the end of November, there were forty-five homes sold in the Galt area. And the median priced home. For that, for in, for in November was four hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Now compared to a year prior, November two thousand nineteen, it was four hundred and twenty-seven. Thousand, five hundred dollars, which shows that during the last year, there was an increase of about five point one percent. In comparison for all of Sacramento County, Sacramento County, their, um. Their average price raised about eleven percent. So home prices are going up. Unemployment for us is pretty high. And, uh, interest rates are very low. So I wanted to give you kind of that economic update a little bit before I talk about the treasurer's report, which will, which will be right now. Um, we have the majority of our funds in the state of California life account. And the reason is because at the end of December, we were able to get to point five four percent. So it's a right around a half percent, which is, is not a lot, but compared to what the two-year and five-year, uh, treasury notes are doing, it's, it's pretty significant. Now that rate at life is certainly going down. Just in the last month, it's gone down ten basis points. So right now it's at point four four. The, um, as I said, about eighty-four percent. Of our money is in life. The other about ten percent is in our local bank, Farms and Merchants. And, uh, we also have some, uh, out of state, uh, uh, out of, I should say, within the United States, some CDs. So, um, also the, uh. Halfway point or of the fiscal year ending December. The city has earned two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in interest. It's very, that, I'll be honest, is very dismal. In a good year, that would be up around a million dollars. So as you can see, these low interest rates are definitely have an effect on, on the city of Galt. Uh, with a difference of about somewhere around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's, uh, that's all I had tonight. And, um, if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer, council members. Um, otherwise I ask for your approval to, uh, to the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Very informative information, especially, uh, the in-depth on the, uh. The unemployment. Do you, do you have any insight to the why the unemployment would seem higher in Galt than the rest of Sacramento County? I mean, do, do you think? That could be tied to COVID at all? I mean, most people unemployed, but a lot of people are working as usual, actually more than usual.
I, you know, I, I don't necessarily, I can't put a, could have put a finger on why. Um, you know, there have been some layoffs, of course, uh, you know, you don't hear about them. And so it's really hard to, to kind of give you a specific reason. But, um, yeah, we have, uh, about ten thousand, five hundred. Uh, people who are employed in Galt and somewhere around eleven thousand, seven hundred that, that are total in what we call total employable. Which makes a difference of somewhere around twelve hundred. So right around ten percent.
Interesting. Well, thank you, sir. As informative as usual. Do any council members have any questions for Mr. Farrell?
I have a curiosity, um. On the Farmers and Merchants Bank, uh, the money market account, it had the same beginning and ending balance, but had a credit of. Four hundred and twenty-three dollars and a debit of four hundred and twenty-three dollars. I was just curious why and where and why it's the same.
So what we have is, is a, um. Uh, situation where they pay interest and as soon as they pay that interest, then it immediately gets transferred out to our regular checking account. So they pay interest of the four twenty-three and immediately goes out the four twenty-three. And that's why you always maintain a, a, a balance of a million dollars. And, and Jay, just, uh, to let you know, I've, I was just informed in December, we received a half percent. Well, I've, I was informed just, uh, yesterday that that half percent is going to go down to point three five percent. So I mean, again, all in, in, in Farmers and Merchants is not the only one, you know, I work, I work certainly full-time at a different bank. And, um, it's the same thing there and it's the same thing among all banks. You can't, it, to get yield these days. Is, is very difficult.
Do any other count, does that answer your questions, Mr. Vandenberg?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Any other council members have any questions for Mr. Farrell?
Okay, I would just like to add one more thing. Uh, in regards to your last comment, I know from an investment standpoint, it's, uh. It is sad when we see rates, you know, get so low, but on the flip side, I know. Um, that, you know, a lot for a lot of, uh, people, their homes are their biggest investment. And I know. Um, that a lot of people are buying homes right now in Galt. Uh, the rates are low, um, prices are crazy high, inventory is low. People are fighting over homes, um, and, uh, I think it's all driven by the rate being so low. And I think that, uh. A lot of people are able to buy homes that maybe were never able to before, even with the price aside. So I think it's, you know, there's a good and bad side always teach. So.
Yeah, there is. If, if you currently own a home, yes, you're, you're correct, Mayor Farmer. Is if you currently own a home, now is the time to refinance it. Or, or as he said, now is the time to purchase a, another home.
Yeah, definitely. Um, my wife and I sold our house about eight months ago and, uh. In our neighborhood, we saw houses similar selling for almost fifty thousand more than we sold our house. So. Huge jump in a short, short amount of time for certain neighborhoods. So thank you again, Mr. Farrell. And if no other council members have any questions. Then I will, uh, look for a motion to approve the treasurer. Actually, do we have any public comment on this item first? Tina?
Uh, no public comment.
And Ms. Rodiger, any hands raised online?
No hands raised.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, treasurer's report as submitted.
Move to approve.
Move, Councilmember Papino.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Lozano. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papino.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Hi. Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Moving on to our next item from the city manager's office, subject is the coronavirus COVID nineteen update. Mr. Heinz.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we want to give an update for February second, twenty twenty-one. The, uh, so what we have here is the cases in Sack County and in Galt. And, uh, comparison of January fifteenth to today. As you can see, this number of cases in Sack County have gone up eleven percent. The number of deaths in Sack County have gone up eighteen percent. Um, with the cases in Sack County, they've picked up another eight, eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five cases. They've also picked up. Well, not so much picked up, but we've lost a hundred and ninety-one folks, uh, due to this virus. In Galt, our cases have gone up by three hundred and fifty-four. And we've lost a total of nine folks, uh, to the virus. Um, that's an increase of nine since January fifteenth. So the pandemic rages on and we still need to take care of each other and take care of ourselves out there. Our regional stay-at-home order ended on January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. All county restrictions throughout California return to their appropriate tier under the blueprint for a safer economy. Uh, from the, uh, governor's office. Sacramento County remains in the purple tier. And the greater Sacramento region ICU capacity is currently at eighteen point four percent. I'll jump back up to the prior bullet. We have, uh, twenty-eight point seven, uh, new COVID cases per. Uh, uh, per day, per thousand, uh, a hundred thousand population. And we have an eight point five percent positivity rate here in Sack County. Regarding vaccines, uh, vaccinate Sacramento is a webpage that contains the most up-to-date vaccine information. I wanted to put this information in a PowerPoint so our citizens could access it. Um, by, uh, reviewing the council, uh, council meeting, this information will, is also on the city's website. But we.
Mr. Heinz, I'm sorry. I, I am not seeing your PowerPoint and I thought, I thought it was my computer.
No, it's not, sir. I'm sorry.
Okay. Can you start from, can you start from the very beginning, the first word that, I'm joking, I'm totally joking.
No worries. No, well, I'll, well, I'll make it, I'll make it, uh, I'll make a quick review. My apologies for the, we've got some, Lorenzo's having some PowerPoint glitches tonight.
Thank, thank you, Rich. I didn't realize there was PowerPoint running. I thought he was just reading it. So thank you very much for inter jumping in there.
Again, my apologies to everyone. Uh, the number of cases in Sack County, as I've mentioned, um, have gone up by eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five. Eleven percent increase. Uh, the number of deaths in Sacramento County, a hundred and ninety-one, um, that's an increase of eighteen percent. Uh, number of cases here in the city of Galt. And when we say Galt, we mean the Galt area code. Or the zip code, I'm sorry. We mean the Galt zip code. So everyone that's in that Galt zip code. Including the city limits of Galt and all those areas surrounding the city limits of Galt. That's what this. Means. So we've picked up another three hundred and fifty-four cases in that region. And we've lost, uh, nine individuals since January fifteenth as well in that region. As I mentioned, the regional stay-at-home orders ended January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. All county restrictions throughout California return to their appropriate tier. Um, Sacramento County repit remains in the purple tier. Uh, our ICU capacity is currently at eighteen point four percent. Vaccinate Sacramento, when you can all see me, see the web, uh, see the PowerPoint, correct? Very good. Vaccinate Sacramento webpage contains the most up-to-date vaccine information. And so that we've, uh, provided the link so folks can access this information. It's also here in the PowerPoint. Sacramento County is continuing to vaccinate those in phase one A. Tier one through, one through three. Healthcare workers, first responders and congregant care staff. Beginning today, February second, the county is coordinating vaccinations at various sites. For those who are sixty-five and older and living in Sacramento County. Demand far exceeds supply and appointments are still very limited. Sixty-five and older can check availability of appointments on the vaccinate Sacramento webpage. New appointments continue to be added, so it's important to check the webpage daily. Individuals in phase one B, tier one can be notified when appointments become available. By signing up on the vaccinate Sacramento webpage. And again, the link to this webpage is out on the city's website and you can also go to the county's website. Uh, the, the folks that are there are targeting for this website at this particular time are folks who are sixty-five and older. Healthcare workers, education and childcare workers, emergency service workers and food and ag workers. The flyer on the left is a flyer from the county and they initially released this in early January. But it provides a good checklist of the, uh, the, the populations that they're focusing on in terms of vaccination. And so all of those red checks represent the groups that are currently in line or, um, uh. Uh, or, uh, eligible for vaccination. So, um, please, uh, the county can, keeps this flyer updated. So it's better. It's great to, uh, keep an eye on the checks and who's up in the, uh, the vaccination queue. City staff will continue to push updates out via social media. The city website and need notifications. Residents are encouraged to sign up for the city news e-notifications. I believe one went out yesterday. And that's accessible on the front page of the website. All of the vaccine information from this presentation can be found under the news tab in the city's website. And Mr. Mayor, that's my presentation for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Heinz. Do we have any council members that have any questions regarding this update? Councilmember Vandenberg.
Yeah, I'm just curious if, uh, there's been any discussion or analytics regarding how the vaccines. Uh, will affect the numbers or any anticipated change in, and how that will change, you know, what tier we may or may not be in.
I don't know if that's being, uh, done. I could tell you that, that is probably the province of the county. And we have not heard, uh, if they were actually doing or performing those analytics, but I would suspect that they probably are. Or either, either at the county level or at the state level.
Have, have they focused on hotspots at all, or is it just, uh, more demographics? Based on vulnerability?
It's hard to say. There's been conversations about hotspots, but. I don't know if there's adequate, I don't know if there's adequate fire follow-through, uh, by the state or the county. And as to whether they are actually meeting or, um, addressing those goals.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, council member. Any other council member, Mr. Lozano?
Yeah, I just want to bring it up, um. To the rest of the council and the public, I had a conversation with, um, a couple of folks in our community that are of the sixty-five and older. Uh, age range, uh, recently. And the, the talk was, um. That, um, at least the feedback was, is that there was some fear, um. On behalf of that commute, part of a segment of our community about even leaving home or leaving their, um, their. Living units, um, to, you get vaccinated. And so the question was, came up, uh, whether or not the county would be willing to come out. And, um. And do vaccinations at some of our, uh, either assisted living facilities or, or, uh, senior living facilities. And so. Um, I, I asked Mr. Heinz to look into that, um, and, and see what that might. What, what that might look, look like in the future. And of course, that's a county function, but, um, one of the things that, uh, was brought up was. Um, going on to that website that he, uh, Mr. Heinz mentioned. And having our, our community that are of the sixty-five and older age range sign up on there for being notified. Um, I believe the county will then start using that data to determine where the need is. And so. Um, so if you're, if you're watching out there and you're in any, any one of these, these tiers, but certainly the sixty-five and older, I would suggest you get on and. And, uh, get the notification if you have that avail, availability at home. So I just want to bring that up as to, as a, a conversation I had this week. And I'm sorry, that actually was last week, but. Uh, I think that there's a, uh, there could be a need out there for our sixty-five and older community. Uh, to get vaccinated a little differently if possible, uh, by the county. So. Um, that's all I have. Thank you for the report, Mr. Heinz. And it, it is a dismal, uh, report. I mean, you never want to go up by nine deaths in a couple of weeks, but, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's scary. So thank you.
My pleasure. Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just, I just want to ma- make sure everyone. Understands that we care about them and they should take care of themselves, take care of their loved ones and take the right precautions. Um, issued by the state and the county and, 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 um, just protect yourselves. Um, issued by the state and the county and, 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 um, just protect yourselves from this virus. It's out there. It's deadly. Um, I have been reporting these statistics ever since I became city manager here in Galt. They keep going up. Um, but we have the vaccines on the horizon. We implore folks who are within these eligible tiers to sign up on the city's website or sign up. Uh, take advantage of the opportunities that are there on the city's website where we direct you to the county. Uh, so you can sign up with them and also sign up for our e-newsletter so we can let you know. Um, as, as, um, the, the most current information about the vaccine, uh, distribution. And, uh, so we're here. We're doing the best we can. We're in communication with the county, um, i- if not daily, every other day, just to see if anything is new. Or anything has changed, or if there's anything that, that can help Galt and the, the region at large.
Thank you, Mister Heinz. Uh, other council members who have not spoken yet, do you have any questions? Okay, with that, then I will, I do have some questions myself. Um, I too have been hearing from some people in the, uh, in the. Senior citizen age, um, with concerns of, um, getting the vaccine. Um, and I do think that we've been doing a really good job. I wanna thank Mister Heinz and Mister, Miss Mendez and other staff that have been involved in. Getting that information out on our social media pages, um, you know, the contact information for the county. And, uh, where to find, um, that. But I do also am concerned that, you know, there's people that are technically challenged that are not on social media. And they're not even, you maybe people that use email for that matter. Um, I know that we have a. Mail, a mailer, our mail newsletter that goes out by mail. I'm not sure if we're still, I know we're transitioning away from, uh, that unless you subscribe. Um, I'll let you comment on that in a sec here, um, Mister Heinz. But, uh, I, I think we just need to use every avenue possible. I would even encourage the city to reach out to the newspaper. I know that. A lot of seniors like to read the newspaper still, so I want to use every possible means to get that information. To these people in some form or another. I would even go as far as to say that. I think we maybe should reach out to maybe the Commission on Aging and some organizations, maybe other service organizations, service organizations that. That, um, work with, um, these people of this age, cuz I, I. When Mister Lozano referenced the care facilities and then, um, senior facilities, I think. With care facilities, I think, you know, you have medical staff and I think that the deployment of the vaccine in that arena is gonna be. Probably very efficient, but you have a whole group of seniors that live in senior housing that are not, you know. Uh, attended by caregivers or anything. They just live in a senior complex. And there's a lot of these people that are just not leaving their homes. They're not going anywhere. For fear of, um, being out in the world. And so, um, how do we, how do we get to those people? How do we get those people, you know, this information? If they're on social media, great, we can be pushing that, but. I think there is, there's gonna be some people and unfortunately, I think if we have some service organizations that can maybe. Join forces with the city to maybe contact, you know, um, uh, landlord for the properties. Um, and say, here, here's the information. Can you please distribute it, you know, by doorstep, leave it on the doorstep for all the people in your, in your senior complex or. Your senior apartments or whatever. I think if we can just touch space with landlords. Um, and if we need assistance, like I said, maybe reach out to some other organizations. But I, I just wanna make sure we're covering all the bases with getting. This information out there to those people, um, every way we possibly can. Um, so my last question, I, I just have a couple of questions regarding your report. So I think there's a lot of confusion going around and. And I, I know it's confusing myself and I don't know if you really have any answers for me. Maybe just give me some insight or give the council some insight. You know, we have, you know, numbers seem to be increasing and we have deaths up and, and all of this, but yet. We also see two things which are kind of puzzling is we have ICU rates which seem to be. Uh, availability is better than it was, but also too, we have our, 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 our state, you know, rescinding stay at home orders and things like that. I think it's very, the message can be very confusing when you have, you know. The perception is that things are getting worse, but we're loosening stay at home orders. And I'm sure we're all very happy to hear things loosening. But at the same time, it doesn't seem to match up. Do you have any insight on that, Mister Heinz?
Well, I don't have any official insight, but I can, I can tell you that based on what I'm seeing. Uh, the state is projecting the ICU rate at a particular level. Um, but yes, at the same time, we're seeing cases go up. And that increase in cases may be the result of increased testing. And there may have been a lull in testing in early January or coming out of the holidays. Um, and now it's February and now maybe those cases are starting to show up. I know we had a, we had a surge a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, perhaps testing ramped it, ramped up at that point. Now we're seeing more cases. Uh, that, well, that would be the only. That we, uh, guesstimate I could provide as to why those cases are going up. I just, I just know we need to take this, this virus seriously.
Thank you, sir. Do, do we have any idea or just a ballpark number of how many? Tests are administered in Galt? I know we've been testing at Chabola for, for a few months now. Do we have any idea about how many people go through there on a daily basis?
I can check with Director Solis and, um, oh, he's, he's right here.
Right here. So we, on a, on a busy day when we've seen a lot of testing. We've seen up to three hundred people, uh, go through there in a day. Um, we believe we have the capacity for up to five hundred. And then, uh, it's really slowed down, not just in our location, but in all the locations that the county is providing testing for. And we were just over a hundred and twenty five, uh, the last couple of weeks.
Okay, interesting. Curious if the number's going down because. People are just either, I don't know, just, I'm just curi- I'm just curious of why the, why the, the amount of people wanting to get tested would go down. It's interesting.
We're trying to figure that out. Also, two weeks ago, we also changed, uh, our registration, um. Procedures where we're going through color versus, uh, uh, Setmore. So it's a new system. People might be a little confused with it. We're trying to get all that information out on how to register, where to register. And helping people throughout the week, uh, before they show up for their appointments. Um, the, the registration that you're now doing is through the state. Um, and it has a, a quite long questionnaire where the Setmores, uh, didn't. Some people believe that these questions are invasive, um, and maybe scared to fill them out. Uh, but, uh, you do not have to answer those questions. So if anybody's watching, you do not have to answer those questions that are on that form.
Thank you. That's good information, especially with, um, uh, with our Hispanic community that, um, for fear of, you know. I don't know, you know, maybe they just don't wanna give up information or they don't understand it very well. I'm sure it's written in both languages and, and such, but, um. I think there's a lot of dynamics at work, but it, it's all interesting. Thank you for sharing that, Mister Solis, and thank you, Mister Heinz. I just have a lot of people asking these kinds of questions. And I'm just trying to, you know, generate some answers by, uh, by thought here. So, um, if any other, if, does any other council members have anything to add before we move off this item? Okay, do we have any public comment, Tina, on this item?
A public comment.
Okay, any hands raised online, Ms. Rottaker?
There is currently no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Well, no further questions and no further comment, then we will move on. Thank you, Mister Heinz, for your presentation. Moving on to our next item from the commu- Community Development Department. Subject is the Catarina Estates Study Session. Which will be from our department head, Mister Craig Hoffman. Mister Hoffman.
Right. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight's item is a study session on the Catarina Estates Project. And next slide, please. And tonight, uh, again, it is a study session. We're not looking to, for, uh, a final action by the council. We're looking for you to, uh, receive our presentation, uh, the applicant as well as gonna make a presentation tonight. We're looking for your questions and comments. Uh, then we're looking for you to open up the project to the public. Uh, come back with any other, uh, final comments and, and questions that you might have. We're looking for direction on the general plan amendment and rezone. And then looking to come back at a later date for a public hearing. Uh, next slide, please. The Planning Commission conducted a public study session on November twelfth in twenty twenty. And then ultimately held a public hearing on January fourteenth, twenty twenty one on this project. The Planning Commission recommended by a four O vote that the city council approved the Catarina Estates Project. This project does include a general plan amendment, uh, modifying, uh, low density residential to medium density. And then, uh, rezoning from low density, single family to a medium density designation. Next slide, please. The project is located, uh, immediately north of, uh, the Galt Cemetery. Uh, at H Street, Enjoy Drive, located, uh, in red. Next slide, please. Again, a general plan amendment from low density residential to medium, the rezone. Uh, from low density to medium density. And then ultimately, uh, the project is a tentative subdivision map for sixty one lots. Next slide, please. So for the general plan, uh, the minimum lot sizes for low density residential is sixty five hundred square feet. And then ultimately has implementing designations of R one A, R one B and R one C. And for the medium density residential designation, that is a minimums, uh, lot size of fifty five hundred square feet. And so when staff started looking at this project, ultimately it was an opportunity. It was one of the last large project sites near the downtown and we were looking to put more density around the old town core area. Uh, next slide, please. The general plan map identifying, uh, the project site located with the, the purple star. You see the, the proximity to the downtown area. Next slide, please. Again, a zoning change going from R one A, which requires ten thousand square foot lots. To an R two, which is a fifty five hundred square foot lot. And next slide, please. And I think this map really gives a, a lot more details. As you start to see the project site again with the purple, uh, star located close to the downtown area. Where you do see, uh, R two, uh, the medium density designation. Some R three that is even a higher designation and it's around that core area of the downtown. And this is a project site that is close to the downtown and walkable to the downtown. Next slide, please. The subdivision map looks to create fifty five hundred square foot lots. Uh, the applicant has proposed a map with sixty one lots. It does meet the zoning minimums. Uh, staff did take a look at this project for circulation pattern, lot layout. And ultimately verifying the utilities are adequate for the project. And the project would be conditioned appropriately to ensure all standards are met. Next slide, please. This is, uh, this does show the map site, again, located up against the railroad tracks. And you have H Street and then, uh, Joy Drive, uh, very much so gridded pattern. As well as having a detention basin to the lower southern portion of the project. Next slide, please. This project, it isn't standard. The, uh, project is conditioned to have design guidelines. I think staff in the planning commission was concerned about what this would look like if we were gonna be doing. A general plan amendment and a rezone. They wanted to see something that could absolutely verify that. The vision of this project would be moved forward. So the applicant did prepare design guidelines. Those are included in your packet tonight. Uh, and they also will be used for ultimate project approval down the road. When a home builder does come forward with, uh, building houses. We're minimizing garages. Including front porches and trying to make the project a pedestrian scale. Uh, next slide, please. So tonight, uh, the planning commission and staff. Believe that the increase in density is appropriate, given the proximity to the downtown. And the planning commission, uh, definitely want to ensure that the project is designed to enhance. The walkability to the downtown and would suggest that home designs include enhanced front porches, porches. And again, minimizing the, the garage door feature. And staff is requesting the council to take in public comments and provide feedback again on this project design. I believe that's my last slide. Okay. So that, that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions, I might be able to answer as well as, I think. Next, we would like to have the, the applicant provide their presentation if we could.
Okay, we'll go ahead with the presentation from the applicant and then we'll start circling around with questions from council.
Excellent, and thank you, um, mayor and, uh, council members, city manager and staff. My name is Aiden Barry. I'm with the True Life Companies. Um, before I get started, um, let me just recognize some of the earlier conversations. We live in a very strange time. Um, and a very difficult time for, for all. Um, and I'm very respectful to the fact that. You all are entertaining the discussion of a subdivision of some land, uh, while there are much bigger problems that exist. Um, but your council and, and your staff have agreed on kind of establishing procedures that allow us to move. Projects forward through a process, um, that is extremely respectful of the times that we live in. Um, and even to the point where there was some feedback about pursuing a general plan amendment and kind of. Uh, almost rushing through the process, which is in no way, shape or form the, the, the intent of us as an applicant. Um, but by going through the workshop process with the planning commission and the workshop process with you all now tonight. Uh, we hope that that provides a level of kind of transparency and discussion about a general plan amendment. It gives you all the comfort level and the support, uh, that you need to be able to consider the project when we bring it forward. Um, following our planning commission, um, hearing and, and action. Uh, but we are extremely, um, excited, uh, to be here this evening. This is our third project in Galt. Uh, we had two other projects down on the other side, on, on either side of cost, the south of us. Um, and we're moving towards downtown and excited about doing that. Um, I wanna thank, um, Craig in his presentation basically, uh, identified very nicely. Um, all of the components that have gone into the site. Um, we've, um, achieved, I think, a density that supports. A need, uh, for housing adjacent to downtown. Uh, we've had a really good time working with staff on. What components of the site need to be supported through pedestrian, uh, connection along H. Um, and we believe we've got a, a really good game plan on how to deal with, um, Joy Avenue and some of the public improvements, storm rates that are required along that frontage. Um, so we're here tonight, um, not with a formal PowerPoint presentation in any way, shape or form. Staff has done an excellent job and we've really enjoyed going through the process at the planning commission level. And we are here to answer any questions that you may have, um, relative to our project tonight.
Thank you, Mister Barry. So what I would like to do is go around to each council member. Um, we'll give everybody multiple chances to speak. Uh. I know some of us may have more questions than others, so if you wanna just ask a couple of questions and then we will give you an opportunity. To ask additional questions, we'll circle around a second time. So we will start with our vice mayor, Mister Sandu. Your microphone is still off.
All right, first of all, I'd like to thank you, Mister Barry, he bringing that project. This is an infill project. And, uh, the other thing I'd like to thank you, Mister Hoffman, you're working on that project. Uh, I have a couple of question on that. Uh, you know, that's a lot. It was. So what is zone was that before R one A, right?
That is correct.
And we going to change to R two, right?
That is the current proposal, correct?
And R one A, we, they can build from one to five, I think, one to six unit. And R two is from, I believe, from five to eight unit.
Correct.
But I looking at the report, uh, it is five to two. And what was the reason we changing from? R one A to R two due to the unit? Requirement or there is some other reason?
Uh, with this project, we were looking to put more density closer towards the downtown. Um, I think, uh, it was looking to, to change a product that was moving from. Uh, a ten thousand square foot lot. This proposal is a fifty five hundred square foot lot. I think. And I don't know, uh. Mister Heinz, can you go back to the PowerPoint if we could? I think there's a slide that shows the the zoning map that shows a good indication of. What's around the project. We've seen a number of properties that have gone through recent entitlements. They are changing to a denser project. We we aren't really seeing the R one A develop. There is property that is identified along cost road is R one A that is. Where the Cardoza one and Cardoza two projects are actually with both of those properties. They went to a R one C zoning designation. So we are seeing that the city is being efficient with its land use. And designations are moving to to higher density, higher densities. This project has some offsite improvements along Joy. Along H Street and then ultimately the connection to Fourth Street. So with some of those offsite improvements justified, at least from staff's perspective. Top the density to help pay for those type of improvements.
Thank you. My my next question is because this one as a city prospect of. This this project is is with affordable housing requirement or it does out of affordable housing requirement?
Within the housing element where we identified four categories. Very low, low, moderate and then above moderate housing. This project would help the city with its moderate housing. I think when you start to look at the very low and low, that's typically apartments. But as far as single family housing, this would help us with our moderate needs.
Alright, and the other thing is most the as a city prospect, we like to be because this project is. Close to the downtown area. And I believe this was same, I think all come. My my same concern on that to the walking. To because you know, there is a fourth state. I don't know how we tackle that and then there is a fourth and fifth state and there is a no stop sign and also. On the joy drive and that's why I I'm talking about it is is mentioned in very. Way to in in a report, but I just I just asked you if you can give us like in brief what you gonna. What you can do, what we can do on that project to be more walkability to the downtown.
And the item tonight being a study session, I didn't provide all the conditions of approval that you'd normally see during a. A a public hearing. This project has been conditioned along the the frontages to the project. Along Joy Drive as well as H Street. You are getting curb gutter and sidewalk. In this project does complete the road section from between. F Street all the way to H Street. So you are going to see a new road section. With curb gutter and sidewalk on both sides. So that improvement takes place. As well as there's a condition for the project to take a look at that intersection right at. F Street and then Fourth Street as it comes up. Currently, you're right, there isn't a crosswalk there. There needs to be improvements to that intersection because we need to provide a safe way. For people walking in this area, not just this project, but other residents in this area to get them into the downtown. So there will be conditions on this project that you'll see at a at a public hearing at a later date.
Okay, and that's condition will be on the developer.
Correct.
Alright, at this time I have this many question, I want to move to the next person.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Papinow, do you have any questions this time?
I don't have any questions. I had the benefit of seeing the whole project and having plenty of input at the initial. Planet Commission meeting. And the developer was. Very accepting of our ideas and I see that some are here and some have been mentioned. Craig mentioned that that we'll see those as conditions that were were put in place. So, no, I was just really impressed with the density being placed in a very walkable area to. Downtown shopping and eating without requiring vehicles to park downtown. So. Yeah, with that, I'll yield to the next person.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Vanderburg.
Good evening. Thank you for the presentation, you guys. I was curious. I'm glad that you brought up the intersection of. I frequent that quick stop a lot and that's that is a pretty tricky intersection. The street's rather wide and that would be a. Difficult, one of the harder places to cross the street, especially with the tracks. They kind of elevate. And help hide the pedestrians if you're coming from the west towards the east. I was curious, there's a row of trees. I believe there are olive trees. All along the west side of that property, will those trees remain in place? Because there's going to be a wall constructed right, a sound barrier to prevent for when the trains come by, correct?
And. There are trees located. I believe those trees are a little bit further over. They're actually on the railroad property. There will be a sound wall. This property does not go all the way to the. To the to the tracks and. Mr. Heinz is wondering, sorry to indulge, asking for the PowerPoint again. There there's a slide that shows the map. I think, I believe it's next slide.
Decimal rating map?
Okay, this this gives a a good indication. So you see. The Fourth Street extension coming down, a number of the trees that you're discussing are actually. On a Union Pacific property that is a little bit further to the west of the property. I think the trees that are still on this property that we see are the old walnut trees. Along H Street and those will be removed.
Yeah, those those should go. Those are.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Barry. What, there's a variety of housing that the zoning and designations allow. What is the intended? Structures to be built. Are they going to be single family detached homes or what is the full range that's anticipating?
Yes, at this stage, it is also it's set up to be single family detached. There'll be one and two story homes. One of the things by going to a fifty five hundred square foot lot, you're really encouraging to try to get our. Our goal as a company is to create a framework for attainable housing. And this site plan adjacent to the site and this site plan adjacent to downtown allows us for. Kind of what we believe is sweet spot in the density, which is a smaller lot. And a more attainable price point, but they will be single family detached, one and two story homes, mostly two story.
Okay, and then one, a final question about the housing element. You said it will help. How does this, I know it's like a little bit unrelated, but how does this help our housing element on on something we haven't voted on yet? Or or rezoned areas for?
If if this project would be approved, it would help our new housing element.
They just discounts forward towards that?
Correct, correct. As a as a vacant property, yes, it will. It will be identified as a site. I think by doing a general plan amendment on this site, by doing a rezone. We're able to have this count more in the moderate range. And again, when you look at the four designations, we have to satisfy. It's very low, it's low, it's moderate and it's above moderate. I would probably tell you that the higher lot sizes that are coming in at eight thousand square feet and ten thousand square feet. That's definitely above moderate. So this project helps us meet the moderate designation and. And we need that in town.
Right, and well, for a good example for the public that technically we could leave some of the designations the same. And still build the same home, but this helps satisfy the state in the things they'd hope to see. So we kind of everybody gets what they want.
Correct.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Vanderburg. Councilmember Lozano.
I I really don't have any questions. I've seen the presentation before and and. Thank you, Mr. Barry and and Mr. Hoffman for their for their work on this. Again, no real questions. I I think that these study sessions are important. And I like it. I I really like the fact that we can hear from each other in the public before. Before it goes to a public hearing. So thank you all for the presentation. I think it's a good project. I I like the idea of walkability to the downtown area. Hopefully that'll that'll boost a little bit of our economy. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lozano. I have several questions. I'll ask just a couple and then I'll go back around to council just in case. Obviously, we've all seen this presentation before, myself included. But just kind of when you look at, and I first I want to say I really appreciate, you know, again, Craig. Your your approach to these things, really trying to engage, you know, everybody's thought process and the whole idea of the. You know, the study sessions is is a a fresh breath of, if a breath of fresh air. And we all really appreciate it, I think, and I'm sure the public does as well. My first couple of questions would be for Mr. Barry and again, Mr. Barry, I apologize. I did get your voicemail. I know you read, reached out to me. To see if I had any questions. I I didn't get that voicemail on time. I so I apologize for that. I wasn't avoiding you. But my first question would be the sound wall. So we I see here that we have so small in here, but it looks like about a hundred and fifty. Hundred and fifty feet from the railroad property to the sound wall. Does that look about right?
That's correct.
Okay, and how tall is the sound wall?
I believe it's the teacher. And Craig, do you have that? It's either six or eight as required by the noise report.
Okay, I did see the noise report and that's very helpful because I did have a lot of concerns about acoustic. Clearly you've. Covered that base and it's it's very informative. I, you know, not in absence of such a report, I would. Would sit here and try to argue all day long that I think sound is going to be an issue from on the south side of the subdivision beings that there's no sound wall there. Which I think that was discussed in the planning, but you do have an acoustic report here. So I mean, obviously those are experts. So I I'm assuming that you know that's going to cover that question. I was just concerned with if you go further south to the um. The Parker. I forget what we call it, the subdivision, but across cost road on the south side, you know, there's a. There's a sound wall behind those homes and I don't know if those homes are actually a lot closer to the tracks. Then this subdivision will be, but that sound wall is huge, you know, it's like, I mean, I don't know, the sound wall could be twenty feet or more. It's 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 a monster. I was just curious, you know, if that was going to be like that, apparently not.
No, and and just that it's a great comment. So that subdivision, my understanding, and Craig can back me up or correct me if I'm wrong, is in fact closer. And so we have a hundred and fifty foot separation and then in looking at the acoustical report, which you have a snapshot in your. Staff report tonight identifies how those noise contours work and then how we're mitigating that with the sound wall itself. And you can, what we're attempting to do and what the staff reporting will acknowledge when you see this as an actual item. Is that we are in compliance with your noise element relative to open space and exterior noise. Based on how we're mitigating the sound. So we're extremely sensitive to that from an ultimate marketing perspective. But it is drastically different than the subdivision you're referring to. And there's two things that were going on with that subdivision was. Is a drainage and grading issue as well as the sound wall and those are compounded, which is why you see the extent of sound wall that you're seeing.
Okay, and and I think you're right about the markability because I, growing up in golf, not far from the railroad tracks off of Fifth Street, actually. You know, you you learn to just sleep through the train, but it's no joke. It's loud. And I business on fourth now and it's so you can't even hear, you can't talk to someone on the sidewalk next to you when the train's going by. So I I again, I'm I'm sure that you have consulted your experts and from a marketing standpoint, you guys know what you can sell. You know, in approximately to a railroad track and so I'm sure you guys have covered those bases. Um, my next question is real quickly for Mr. Hoffman. You kept referring to R one A as a minimum sixty five hundred, but then you kept referencing as as ten thousand square foot lot. Can. Can you please clarify? I was confused on that.
Sure, I think the first number I was trying to refer to is the general plan that identifies a minimum sixty five hundred square foot lot. Meets the the low density, uh, single family residential standard. Within our zoning, we have R one A, which is a ten thousand square foot lot. R one B, which is an eight thousand square foot lot and then R one C, which is a is a sixty five hundred square foot lot. So within the low density zoning designation, if you were to say, what is the smallest? Low density, single family lot you could build at sixty five hundred square feet.
Okay.
You're right, I was throwing out a lot of numbers there.
Okay, and I can't really read even in my staff report and on your presentation. What what is the typical lot size we're looking at? It's so small, I can't really read it.
Minimum is fifty five hundred square feet and they're fifty five feet wide. I think one of the reasons why we want. A wider lot or minimum being fifty five feet wide. That allows you to actually do something from an architectural standpoint to the to the house. You're able to include a porch. You're able to minimize. The garage doors. Think you get too much narrower than fifty five feet when you're, yeah. Two five foot side yard setbacks. Being able to use that full forty five feet, you're able to include architecture that that minimizes. The garage being such a a focal feature. So that's one of the things that we're really trying to do. And then the design guidelines really help to set the tone. This is the expectation so that when we see houses built here. We have a tool to to use working with the home builder to say, no, this is the expectation. This is what we want to see.
Okay. Mr. Barry, I was just cruising through your elevations here earlier and then again right now. Are these actual photographs? I think there's, well, it's not on your PowerPoint, but on page four of mine. There's a, there's a, it says it's a one and two story examples. It's kind of like a craftsman style look, kind of have some like craftsman style windows like over the garage. Is this typical of what some of the designs you guys are using?
Yes, so what we've done so far, Mr. Mayor, is we've worked with our architect K G G Y. To come up with some examples. When we first started this discussion in the actual workshop with the planning commission. We had not yet developed the design guidelines, which you're seeing at least a piece of it. You'll see more of as we go through the actual application. But so we presented a a a streetscape of what this could look like. And then what we did is we developed design guidelines which would create the framework such that conditions of approval could be applied to a future project. To ensure that you got that look. But the whole concept of those design guidelines or a big percentage of them is so that you've got a street friendly. Look so that it's not garage dominant. And if I may, just for a quick second, go back to something that Craig had mentioned earlier. When we were first looking at this project, we were bringing forth even a smaller lot. But the feedback in the discussions that I had with staff and some of the community members, including some of the councilors. Maybe the fifty foot wide made too much of a garage dominant product and that's to a great extent. How we ended up with fifty five feet in width, which gave us that additional five feet of width where we could bring forward the porch. And minimize the garage and then we memorialize that with the guidelines that showed the. Not only the portrait but window placement to again create that friendly streetscape. And to a great extent, that was the feedback that we got that we wanted all to see really solid guidelines. That would tell the story of what this project will look like when it gets built and even later on. So that's why it's brought forth that way, but your your read is accurate. Those those pictures depict. How we are going to, how the designs will come forth as we do a subsequent design review.
Okay, yeah, because there's examples like there's a front porch example and there's actually a bay window example, which. To be honest with you, it's kind of unique. I don't really see that that type of thing on on homes these days, at least not around here. So these are actually features that will be used in some of these homes.
Yes, so that is an architect, K T G Y, that will apply those features and and that architect. Works with the builders that we're considering for this project. So everything you're seeing in that example is in fact. A staple of a menu of design items that will in fact exist in this project.
Okay. Alright, I I have a couple additional things, but I'm gonna wanna. All right, I have a couple of additional things, but I'm going to want to go around again and my councilors and I take too much time to myself here. Do any of my other council members have some questions they want to bring up for a second round here in this? I can't see all of you at the moment because of the presentation. Just speak up if you do.
And Mr. Mayor, we also do want to get the public involved if there's anyone on the line. Okay.
Yes, we will. Vice Mayor, do you have questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have just one question, but there was a two lots, right? There is a small house on the corner, I think, edge on Joy. Can you little bit tell me what that can be is a different zoning, right? It still can be a different zoning and how are we going to go around? Anybody discuss with them or anything? Can you feedback, Mr. Hoffman?
Well, I think I could turn it over to Aiden as far as what his contract is with that property owner. They they wanted their own property. No, that property is in it. It's not a part of this development. It retains its existing general plan designation. It retains its existing zoning because they didn't. They didn't ask for it. They didn't ask for an increase in in the general plan or the zoning. They didn't want to be a part of this application. So they're not a part of it.
So that's a different.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me, a council member. Go ahead.
Mr. Barry, there lot you have and the corner lot that is separate owner on these both lots, right? One of you are the owner, the other is separate, right?
No, if I may, and Craig, I think said it perfectly, the owner of that lot is in fact the seller of the land to us in our selling arrangement with him. He wanted to keep his existing lot as it's currently laid out and is shown on the exhibit. So we'll be building a fence around his property, but he wanted to keep that property in its current shape. And there will not be a subdivision of that property.
Thank you. Thank you for the explanation.
Thank you. Any additional council members, more questions before I go on to some public comment?
I have none.
Okay, all right. Do we have any public comment on this matter, Ms. Hubert?
No public comment.
And Ms. Roderger, do we have any hands raised online?
I am looking and it looks like we currently do not have any hands raised.
Okay, if anybody's watching, you still have an opportunity to raise your hand if you're watching on Zoom. If you'd like a question before this session is over, I will go back to the public one more time. I would like to ask just one couple of last quick things or actually thoughts more or less. So I was noticing on the zoning. Can you tell me on Olive Court and Almond Court, which are the two cul-de-sacs just north of the project that are the older homes, I think, built probably in the sixties, maybe seventies, I think. What zoning are those, Craig?
There are one seed. There's sixty five hundred square foot lots.
Okay, but if you go further to the north, I noticed most of the Old Town area, meaning the areas like Fifth, Sixth, Seventh Street, as it intersects E and 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 so on. Those are all R two.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I normally people are kind of opposed to smaller. I get a lot of people. It's the first thing they get. They, you know, they get concerned about smaller lot sizes. I think the proximity of this project to the Old Town is more conducive to what it is. Like you, you mentioned the R two. I think I don't really have a problem with that. I like that it's kind of a higher density. I think it would kind of be a little odd to have something larger. I think that's more appropriate as you get more out. So I don't think I have any issues with, you know, the zoning that we're kind of ending up with here. I do. I don't think it's been mentioned at all here, maybe in the report, but what is the square footage rate? What's the minimum square footage is and what's the maximum that we're talking about here on these lots?
Minimum is fifty five hundred square feet. And let me go back to the stack.
The square footage of the homes.
Oh, at this point in time, the the homes have not come forward yet. I think I'd have to turn that over to Aiden to see, but this project will require a formal design review that comes before the planning commission.
Okay, I'm just curious. I mean, you have, Mr. Barry, you have to have an idea in mind about your your range or ballpark.
Yes, for this density with the site with the setbacks and the rest of it, it's in eighteen to twenty eight hundred square feet. It could go a little bit larger, a little bit smaller than that, but those are the sweet spot of the, you know, three and four bedroom homes that we would anticipate and potentially even five bedroom. But more but more likely four bedroom.
And what is the largest of the lots in the subdivision? I just can't read it. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, I think.
I'm just checking with Derek whether we've got a number. It's oh, the largest is nine thousand plus.
Oh, okay. So even though we're talking about minimums of fifty five, they do range up to three thousand. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So my last, just my last thought, I know this is again, I love this whole thing. We all put our, you know, two cents in and stuff. Is I just want to echo what I think Councilmember Vanderburg said earlier. I really think, you know, the goal of this was to, well, one of the key features of this subdivision was its proximity to Old Town and and the walkability. And we keep that keeps getting brought up and referred to. And I think the the critical part of making that a reality is going to be that transition from H Street onto Fourth Street, crossing F. F is such a dangerous intersection. It's it's I drive it every day. You, when you come, if you're heading south on fourth, you can't even really see if there's any cars parked along the street. You can't even see oncoming traffic to to the to the to the left. You have people coming over the tracks. They're usually always speeding. There's been pedestrians that have been killed there in the last few years. There's been multiple accidents. I was a witness to one myself. And so I think that it is critical that we include some serious discussion about that intersection, not only for pedestrian safety, but just for just for, you know, auto and pedestrian. It has to. We have to be looking at that seriously.
When you see the next staff report, when we come back, the public hearing, I'll highlight those conditions as part of the staff reports that you can see those conditions. There's several that that are in regard to safety and improvements that will help the walkability of this project.
Okay.
Mr. From your applicant's perspective, in working with Craig and with Bill Forrest, your staff has been very clear in echoing that concern. And we believe that we've, from a qualitative perspective, I can represent that we've rolled up our sleeves and work with you with your staff. I'm hoping that when you see the actual project and the application will be coming forth to you shortly, that you'll see the quantitative analysis of that. But we we hear you loud and clear.
Okay, yeah, I just, I mean, I just want to really just reiterate this. I I I do not want to undermine our public work staff and their knowledge and in doing traffic studies and such. But I think that there's been instances where traffic studies just look at things from a data perspective and not and 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 someone who travels the area and goes, you know, in that proximity a lot, you know, sometimes I just don't want to get a situation where we come back to, well, we just the data just doesn't reflect doing anything. I'm telling you this subdivision, if anybody's going to come off H and go on to a fourth street on that curve there and come out, which there's a gas station there, so that would be a definitely a path of travel to get fuel. And, you know, maybe somebody going to work, they want to go get gas and they head out. It's going to be dangerous there and and I and I would have just to be, I'm just going to throw this out right now. I'm going to have a difficult time ultimately approving this project unless there's something going to be done at that intersection. I'm just going to put that out there right now. So I just want you guys to know that as we proceed forward. So that's all I have right now. I know I threw a lot. I'm sorry, but I just great project. I love it. It's infill. I think it's going to be good for golf and I look forward to seeing the ultimate progression of this thing. I would like to throw back out to the council members. Does any other council member have anything else they would like to add before I reach the public comment one more time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Good.
Just only one more question, same thing. You know, I that project is good, is is in infill project. Thank you, Mr. Barry, to bring that project to the city. Also, thank you, Mr. Hoffman. But I'm telling this project have some requirement and that's kind of thing at this time, you know, I'm going along with the with the project. But I'm now going to, you know, tonight can make a decision when you can bring him back. We'll see, but the project is good. You know, city need this project, but there is some, you know, requirement will be maybe extra than the other project. So that's we are looking for personally, I'm looking for the next when they bring the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmembers Lozano, Papinow and Vanderburg, do you have any further questions? Okay, if not, would like to to make sure we have no additional. Well, I know we don't have any written comment, but do we have any hands raised, Ms. Roderger?
I am looking and no, there are no hands raised.
Okay, so those of you that are watching, should you have questions about this, we are obviously, you're really trying to engage the public on this. We want to hear from you. So there will be another opportunity for you to comment or you can reach out to council members through emails if you have concerns. So with that, thank you, Craig. Appreciate this time. Mr. Barry, thank you for coming and answering our questions. And again, thank you for, you know, bringing such a project to golf. So without further ado, I will move on to the next item. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
You as well. All right, moving on to our next item from our Parks and Recreation Department. Subject is the Walker Community Park Improvement C I P six nineteen B presented by our Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Armando Salles.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As this is a C I P project, this falls under the Public Works Department. So I'd like to introduce Mike Selling, our Public Works Director. He'll be leading this presentation.
Thanks, Armando. Good evening, Mayor Farmer and fellow council members. Mike Selling, your Public Works Director. Yeah, just a brief background on this and then I'm going to turn it over actually to our our project lead for the city, Mr. Trung Tran. But first, back in the summer of two thousand nineteen, the city received a grant from the state parks, just under one point seven million dollars. This past June, two thousand and twenty, your council approved a consultant contract for the Public Works Department to hire a consultant to do the design for the improvements, basically utilizing those grant funds from the state. So with that, I will ask Mr. Trung Tran, our senior engineer, to take over. And I think our consultant has a presentation.
Trung, go ahead. Just unmute your mic. Trung, are you there? It looks like Trung is on, but he's having some difficulties with his microphone. There he goes. Trung, can you hear us? If you can hear me, there you go.
Let me see, activate my camera. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and member of the public. I just want to might touch on a lot of things that, you know, overview of the project. I just want to note that the with that state grant for the city, it's required that the city complete the improvements by the end of this year. So we awarded the contractor to Somas and they're helping us out. We're looking at the old master plan. The old master plan was about sixteen years old. And so we wanted to update the master plan, the park master plan to identify and bring the bring the improvements to what the city currently needs. We had multiple meetings with with Somas and staff and came up with an option. We made presentation to the Parks Commission in November and the Planning Commission this last month. And both commissions approved staff's recommendation unanimously. And so with that, I'd like to turn it over to our design team. Jeff, Leslie and Perry and Alicia from Somas.
Evening. Good evening, Mayor Farmer, council members, city manager and staff. My name is Jeff Chess. I'm with Somas. We are your design consultant for the Walker Park Master Plan. I'd like to thank you for having us here tonight and also like to thank your staff for their support and leadership in the development of the master plan. I would like to introduce our team that worked very closely with staff to produce the Walker Park Master Plan, which we're presenting for your consideration this evening. Alicia Moniz is our architect consultant with Moniz Architecture. Perry Cardoza is a landscape architect with Nuvis. And Leslie Fraser is with Somas. She's a civil engineer and she's project manager that led this project and led the consulting team. So I'd like to turn it over to Leslie to begin the presentation.
Thank you for having our project team on tonight's agenda. We have taken the updated master plan to the Parks Commission back in November, and we've also been at the Planning Commission as well. And we're excited to be on the city council agenda to share our updated master plan this evening. We also wanted to highlight the process that we've been through this past year and also some of the adjustments that have been made to bring the master plan into alignment with the community's current needs. And so to kick off our presentation that we've prepared for this evening, we thought the first thing to do instead of presenting the updated version just right off the bat is to circle back around and review what the original master plan that was approved back in two thousand and four. So if you go ahead and hit enter on the presentation. So this is the original two thousand and four approved master plan. And just to orient everyone on the screen, Sergeant Avenue is on the lower portion of your screen. And then we've got the existing residential neighborhood on the top of the screen and north is pointing to the left of your screen. And there's some of the improvements have already been constructed in Walker Park today. If you hit enter, we've shaded that out so we can see what's currently there. Oh, enter on the presentation. There we go. So what's currently out there today, there's two soccer fields. There's an existing parking lot that's got about a hundred parking stalls right now. There's a synthetic turf field and a restroom and a portion of the access road, a very small portion, has been constructed. And if you hit enter, you'll see some basins that are that exist for stormwater management. And you can see that there's still a large portion of the park that's yet to be developed. And we were tasked with evaluating if there was going to be further construction to evaluate what the current goals and objectives are for the park and to make sure that those current goals are incorporated into an updated master plan. So what we were able to do is identify staff three categories that those goals fit into. And we came up with that they fit into recreational goals, infrastructure goals and financial goals. And the first thing that we'll go through is what the recreational goals are. And probably one of the biggest goals for the project and objectives was to add a third lighted ball field and really makes sort of a tournament ball field complex as part of the park. And there was also a desire to increase ball field lengths and to capture more age ranges for the fields and then also to provide some additional walking trails and passive play areas for community use. And if you hit enter again and then one more time, you'll see what the infrastructure goals were. And those were pretty quickly identified that there needed to be some more restrooms and storage available within the park. And the portion of the access roadway to go ahead and extend that and make that loop down and connection into Sergeant Avenue and definitely to provide some more additional parking within the park. And then enter a couple of times, one more time, and then we'll see the financial goals was part of creating the three ball fields together was to create a revenue stream by attracting baseball and softball league tournaments to the city. And then as Trung had mentioned, there was also the state grants timeframe as well. So there's also a financial goal of utilizing the grant that's available. And then enter one more time. And then this is an overview of our development process, just our process that our development team, it was definitely combined effort with Alicia, Perry, Jeff and I and working with city staff conversations and staff workshops to really come up and address the goals that we just went through. We also went through the original master plan from two thousand and four and identified what amenities were really important that the city would like to keep today and what amenities they would like to add, like the third lighted ball field. As part of that process, As part of that process, we really took into consideration the amenities, but also there was a development process to come up with five different concept options or schematics. And then ultimately review that with city staff, take pieces that we liked from different options and combine that ultimately into a refined master plan that we're going to present tonight. The picture on the slide is one of the studies that we utilized to look into the opportunity to increase the ball field lengths. The original master plan was developed with two hundred foot ball field lengths. And there was a desire to get a greater age group and capture greater age group utilize the fields. And so we did a study looking at, you know, could we get a little bit greater than two hundred? Could we get two twenty-five? Could we get two fifty? Could we get three hundred? And then also evaluating those baseball field lengths at different areas on the property. If you hit enter again, we'll look at the option that was ultimately chosen. The city and the project team really liked keeping all three ball fields together, although we looked at different options of relocating fields and separating them. But ultimately, the project team chose to to keep that unit together and really, really make a nice facility. But one one, I want to say problem, one thing that we we didn't like about it is when we added the third ball field, we removed parking from that area. And so one objective was like, well, if we could get more parking closer to the ball fields, you know, how could we do that? And so what we ended up doing is we had an option and option three that relocated the basketball courts and the tennis courts a little bit further away and that made some available space. So if you look at your screen, if you see the community center right in the middle to the left are the tennis courts and basketball courts. And what we decided to do that was shown in another option was relocate that to the right of the screen and that freed up that area for additional parking. If you go ahead and hit enter, you'll see how we kind of, we combined option one and then what showed up on the right of your screen was option three. And we liked those two different ideas and we just sort of meshed them together and that really set the cornerstone of what the updated master plan would be. And if you hit enter one more time, we'll see what the updated master plan looks like. One more time. I guess I should have said twice there. There's the updated master plan. Colored up nicely, you can see that the the ball fields are together and relocated courts that we just discussed. And if you hit enter on the presentation, we'll go ahead and grade out the existing improvements that are there today. And then I wanted to walk the council through what some of the the big, you know, big changes that were made to highlight that for you. And so if you hit enter, it'll show that third lighted ball field. And with that, I was going to hand that over to Perry to discuss.
Thank you, Leslie. Appreciate the the opportunity and to present to council. As part of our design philosophy and trying to understand walkability, usability and this current environment which the ball field is sitting in, it just made sense for this location. As we were looking at the overall master plan and visibility connectivity to the other portions of the park as well as looking at tournament play and how to fence and secure these areas you know, for that type of play, whether it's in use or out of use, it would be easy to maintain and to sort of keep in that tournament play venue. If you look at the upper, you know, so be left field where the G is on the plan, that's sort of the main gateway to the to the entrance to the multiple fields. That's where the ticketing would take place. That's where you, the major control points, although on either side would be control also. But that would be the main one during the tournament play. So at that, it's brief, but it it seems to work, you know, with the functionality of the park. Thank you, Leslie.
And if you hit enter again on the presentation, it will highlight some of the additional parking that was added. So you can see that we've added some parking on the left side of the community center. And then also quite a bit of additional parking down on the right side of your screen by where the new tennis and basketball courts are at. And enter again, and we've also provided an opportunity for parallel parking along the street as well. Another item that's all we've already talked about and discussed, but if you hit enter again on the presentation, it kind of highlights where the original courts relocated. Enter one more time. And then the relocated tennis courts that are there. So most of the changes really when we did this update, we wanted to stay very, very, very close and consistent to the original master plan, but you can see that there were just a couple of adjustments and to meet what we felt were the current goals for the city. And then the last thing we'll discuss is the restroom building. And if you hit enter again, we'll show where that's located on the master plan, right in the center situated in that baseball softball field tournament area. And then I'm going to hand that over to Alicia. And she'll talk a little bit more about elevations and specifics of the restroom building. And if you hit enter on the presentation, we can go to go to her slide.
So the restroom building, staff expressed that they would like it to look somewhat like the existing building and to have six individual stalls. So you can see on the left of the slide, there's a floor plan and it shows how we're proposing six stalls. Each of them would be accessed from the exterior of the building in a self-contained room. Three of them are ADA accessible and three of them are not. That complies with code. And so we have a little bit of leftover space for storage for supplies used for maintaining the restrooms. You can see that that there are some columns on the outside that would support an overhang to help protect from sun and rain. There's an elevation down in the lower right corner. And it shows a gable shaped building would be made of a concrete block, which is a very durable, easy to ma- maintain material and similar what your existing restrooms are on the site. Pitched roof with metal roofing, gable invents for lots of natural through ventilation. And then again, your your overhang for shade and shelter. And we also have some bottle filling stations and tap accessible on one end of the building. And that concludes my restroom presentation.
And if you hit enter again on the presentation, the last slide we have is the schedule to go through. And most of the schedule under line three, the concept development, quite a bit of that's already completed. In fact, tonight we're on three point six, which is the city council presentation. From that, based on what's selected, if we end up going into design, there's a design and permitting process and then ultimately to get the design plans out to bid and construction in order to utilize grants money within the timeframe that's at December thirty first of this year. And if you hit enter again, that's the last slide of the presentation for any questions and comments to from council members.
Thank you, Ms. Frazier. Thank you, Parks and Rec staff. Thank you, Mr. Chess. I will start off with actually, I think I would like to start with public comment if that's okay with the with the rest of the council members. Do we have any written comment on this subject at this time, Tina?
I have one written comment. This is from Joe Batondo. My name is Joe Batondo and I have lived in the city for thirty years. I was a member of the Parks and Recreation Committee for a number of years and even served as Chair of that commission. In addition, I've coached multiple sports in this town. And more importantly, I'm a father of two children under the age of thirteen. I urged the commission to send the Walker Park Master Plan back to the drawing board. While agree for the need for more parking and restroom facilities, I do not agree that the city continues to build closed park facilities. A vast majority of those sports in this town, this of the sports fields in this town are fenced off and locked away from the people they are intended to serve. It is no wonder people are constantly breaking into the turf field at Walker to play soccer or football. We are sending taxpayer dollars on amenities and then charging the taxpayers to use the facilities they paid for. The city already approved another gated private soccer field in the new development going in north of Twin Cities Road. Ask Mr. Solis why his department continues to push for this. We currently have eight closed sports facilities. I know Mr. Solis will say that the turf field at Walker is open on Sundays and Veterans is open every day. The veterans part is a lie. It is hardly unlocked. And why are we locking it due to COVID? So nobody can run on it while the skate park across the street is open with a dozen plus kids in it. Now we are going to build three more baseball diamonds that will be fenced off along with all the other sports fields in the city. And those diamonds will be too small for a majority of the residents to play on anyway. Currently, the G Y B can barely fill three teams in the under eleven bracket. Why are we limiting ourselves to under twelve baseball tournaments? What studies have there been that show there's demand for fields that small? What the city of Galt needs is to look at many of the parks in Elk Grove. While yes, those fields are often rented, when they are not, they open to the public to play, train and enjoy. Go take a look at the Hall Bartholomew How Bartholomew Sports Complex in Elk Grove as a prime example. Stop keeping kids from enjoying parks. Stop limiting our open space. Stop fencing us out. We are paying for the parks. Let us use them. That's all the written comments.
But thank you, Mr. Batonda, for your comment. Ms. Rodiger, do we have any hands raised online?
We currently have no hands raised on the attendee side.
Okay, well, at this time, I'd like to go around to the council members and get some feedback from them. So we will start with our Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would like to thank you, the public department, Public Work Department, I think, planning and also Parks and Recreation Department to bring this, you know, proposal to the council. And I also like to thank you, that consulting firm, I think, Prosmos. They're doing a good job to explaining, you know, on that Walker Community Park. And I believe I'm very, you know, think this, looking at the second stage. But I have a couple of question to maybe consulting firm. I'm looking on the report, there is a five options. And there's a five option and I believe staff and the consulting company, they recommending only one option. What was the reason to recommending one option? And since you showing to the council, there is a five option. And the other thing is I look at the you know, staff report. This is explained, they will have schedule impact that may not allow sufficient time to move forward with the design and construction within the grant. But my question is, I I like the option one, but my thing is can you somebody clarify if we make a five option? And then we shutting down, we cannot look at the other option. Only option is one option because the timelines. Or what happened? Why it was not the council can look all the five options? Somebody from the staff or somebody from
Ms. Frazier or Mr. Chess, would you like to address that question?
Sure, I could address that. Thank you. I think either Mike or I should address that.
Okay.
Or or even Craig. You know, a lot of it had to do with our environmental document. The other options really interfered with what was already approved. They, the baseball fields would have been in the basin areas. So this is, this was a compromise in where we did not have to touch that environmental document. Am I correct, Craig?
Yeah, I think one of the the goals that the council set up last year was that this was going to be more of an update. We weren't creating impacts that weren't addressed back in two thousand and four. We've tried to stay within the context of what was developed previously in two thousand and four. We didn't want to do anything that would provide new impacts to adjacent property owners. So we felt like this was an option that really stayed within the context of what was there. But really did take a look and verify what were the facilities that were needed in two thousand twenty-one moving forward, were they still relevant from two thousand and four? But I think that's really how in Armando put that right. That's how we got to this option was staying in within that context. Not having to redo a new environmental document in in creating a a master plan that made sense within the context of what's there.
So the Craig, this means there's the only option is very less with the environment, right? If we go any other option, then we can a more environmental that we not reaching our goal is can be delaying. That's why we on focus on option one, right?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you, Craig. My next question is on the report, there is a three letter we receive from this. I know it's mentioned in a in a staff report, but can somebody from the staff very brief, how we addressing these three letter? What they're concerned and how we, our point of view is we moving on option one.
I I will be glad to take that. I think one of the letters referred to the exit onto Sparrow Drive, that it wasn't there in two thousand and four. If you looked at the original master plan, it is, it had always exited there. It's not a cul-de-sac where that person lives at. If you go there now, you'll see that it is a street that is meant to go through and attached to something. So I'm not sure where he was under the impression that that roadway was not going to come out on there. I think the other concern was the lights, if they were going to be the same as they are at the soccer field, and yes, they will. The length, if baseballs would be hit into their property. Only thing that will be scheduled there are age appropriate baseball games, softball games, so twelve and under or high school softball girls. And the third one was the control facility, not locking it up. And that is a policy decision that can be made by council once the park is structured and developed and ready to go. City Council made that decision in two thousand and fifteen about Veterans Field and about the Walker Grass Fields to keep them up open to the public. And we have been pre-COVID.
All right, reminder, I'm talking about that, that question Joe Patando have it. I'm talking about we are in the process to build a park at this time. If later on, if there is if later on, if there is that we want to open that council have the authority to open that park, right?
Yes, you do.
Okay, so I just want to make sure because now we are in the process to, you know, building a park. But later on, if City General or Council have the authority to, if they want to be unlocked or lock, right?
City Council can direct staff at any time to open and close a park, a facility. It is that their discretion to do that.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Mayor, can I jump in here for a minute?
Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor Sandu, you asked a question about the options. And so at this time, I'm going to ask staff to go to page twelve of the consultant's report and give council a summary overview of those five options, starting on option one. Now, in the staff report, we mentioned the five options are laid out between pages twelve and I believe sixteen. And so I'd like to have staff or the consultant just summarize each of those options. So I want to make sure the council has the full So I want to make sure the council has the full array of what's available to us. And then we can describe the limitations of the other four and what led us to the one that we're recommending. Um, so Vice Mayor Sandu, I hope you don't mind if I revisit that question. I'd, I'd like a little more clarity provided to you.
Thank you.
Jeff, can you have one of your staff go over what those options are?
I couldn't hear if you were talking to me, Armando, but, uh, I think, uh, Leslie, you might be the best unless Trung, uh, I'll defer to either of you.
I, can I ask Leslie if I thought on the presentation on the slides, we had extra slides in the back that went through and showed actually option one through option five?
Yeah, if we want to do the screen share again.
Very good, very good.
You can go through that and I'll explain it.
Okay. Okay.
Leslie, you're gonna, I'm gonna, you're gonna take the lead here. Um, is this the very last slide?
Yeah, this is option one, and then the next slide is, I believe, option two, and then so on and so forth. So why don't you give us, uh, just a quick summary of option one, and then we'll move on through the other, the other four.
Trung, do you want me to take the lead on this?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay, and so for each option, we've got sort of the pros and cons listed out in the upper left-hand corner. And of what we felt, um, for, for each option, what, what was beneficial and maybe something that, that wasn't so beneficial to it. And when we put these five options together, we listed out the pros and cons. And then this was discussed in a staff, a staff workshop from there. So in option one, um, very first thing is that the approved master plan stays intact, other than we have the minor change of adding the extra baseball field. And also, uh, we really liked how the stormwater basins were not impacted, that those stormwater basins are actually sized uh, for stormwater management. They meet the current needs today, but they also meet the current needs of stormwater management in the future. So as the park develops, as it develops in phase one B, phase two, phase three, and future build out, um, the park can actually manage all of the stormwater to meet what the MS four requirements, what the county requirements are. And as, as, as the project is built out without any, any additional improvements or area dedicated. And then, go ahead.
Oh, Leslie, I'm sorry. Just, I, I wanted to comment on the ball fields and on why they were, it makes sense programming wise. In this alternative is that the, the use of the restrooms, the concessions, the walkability and having, uh, kids. If, if the field or play are located on other portions of the park, as you'll see in other options, then that increases that connectivity and, and it doesn't make it as convenient, uh, for parents and whatnot. So the three fields in this location is a definite pro, yeah, in, in the programming aspect of tournament play as well as, uh, just functionality. Back to you, Leslie.
Yeah, and then if you hit enter, we'll go to option two. There's option two. And again, we, we don't impact the basins. The only change we're really making is, um, we're adding that third ball field. Um, but we are, I guess, one of the pros was also we could get a three hundred foot field in there as well. Uh, that ball field that's located all the way to the right of the screen was a three hundred foot field. Um, but the cons to this option is, um, the, the fields weren't combined together. And, um, you know, I guess we can, we can go through, we could only get, um, we couldn't get two hundred and fifty feet on the original fields. We could get two twenty-five. Um, the corporation yard was eliminated, uh, because of the ball field. Um, tournament play and field access is not as convenient as having all the fields together. And that ultimately was one of the cornerstone, uh, decisions of how to move forward with, uh, with the final option. Um, there was also a concern with lighting on the east side of the park. And that there was also a FEMA one hundred year floodplain limit that the third ball field would be impacted by. And then if you, if we don't have any questions about, we can go to option three. It's option three. Um, so in this option, we've got, um, pretty much it's the same as option two, but that three hundred foot ball field is located to the left side of the community center. Um, just right off the bat on my eye, and I'm not even sure this was listed as a negative. But you can see that one of the stormwater basins is impacted by this. So, um, there would have had to been some sort of stormwater management or footprint revision um, to accommodate your stormwater flows. Um, but the cons to this one, um, many of them are the same as, you know, we, we can't achieve two hundred and fifty feet on the original two ball fields, but we can achieve the two twenty-five. Oh, number two, it does say that the nor- northerly basin volumes impacted. Um, the corporation yard is still eliminated on this one. And then also that biggest concern is that the three fields, uh, are not together. It's not as convenient as having, um, all the three ball fields together near the proposed restroom. Um, also, there was a concern with lighting adjacent to the existing residential neighborhood. Um, that would be located on the upper portion of your screen. And, um, the tennis and basketball courts aren't necessarily in close proximity to other activities. However, uh, ultimately, um, we move forward with keeping them in that location for the benefit of having more parking closer to the soccer fields, synthetic fields, and the baseball fields. Were there any questions on this option?
No, thank you.
Yeah, and then, um, option four. Um, so this option, we do keep all three, three fields together. Um, there was, since I always like stormwater work, to me, I'm like, oh, this, you can see that the southerly basin is completely impacted and obliterated. But we still wanted to throw that out as an option because we knew it was really important um, for the city to have that baseball, softball tournament unit, uh, together. Um, so the southerly basin volumes impacted, um, the lighting on the east side of the park's not favorable. So there's that adjacent, um, existing residential neighborhood. Tonight, you've got three ball fields, um, and a lighting conflict with that neighborhood. Also, the community center, um, is flipped to these, um, uh, the bottom portion of your screen. And we just felt like that community center was out of place. Um, as, as well as the, the biggest impact of this option, as you can see that we're making some wholesale changes to the originally approved master plan at this point, and we're reconfiguring, uh, much of what that original approval looked like. And then on option five. Um, again, you can see that the community center has been, um, relocated. We're reconfiguring much of the master plan at this point. Um, we do have the three ball fields almost located literally so people could walk, you know, all the way from one field all the way down to another, but at least they're located on the same side, um, as the access road. And of course, you still have these same negative impacts of the lighting next to the existing adjacent residential neighborhood, um, as well as some significant impacts to the, um, stormwater basins.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Um, Vice Mayor Sandu, any, any clarification needed for any of those options or any?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. It's well explained. Thank you.
Very good. Mike, Armando, we'll, we'll leave it to, uh, the next council member to, uh.
Councilmember Papinow, do you have some input on this matter?
Yeah, two areas of concern, I think it was answered pretty clearly to, uh, the Vice Mayor. That as far as the hours of availability to this park, um, what we're looking at tonight is design. And regardless, I mean, if we go ahead and approve this design, the accessibility is determined by our determination of when to open and close the gates. And I think that's certainly a discussion that can be, uh, begun and maybe reexamined at the, uh, Parking Recommission and then, you know, work its way up, uh, i- if that's an issue. So, um, you know, u- unless anybody can tell me why some design factor that we're looking at tonight would preclude us from having full, as full availability as, as we might want.
It wouldn't, it would just be as simple as leaving the gates unlocked and open.
Okay, so that's a, that's a policy decision, not a design thing, and we can take that up at a, at a different time. Secondly, I, I do like the idea of the three fields being on a, a hub there for marketability to bringing tournaments and obviously it can, uh, fulfill a girl softball and then twelve and under boys. If we did look at some of the others, I mean, it, it doesn't look like there's anything feasible from the other options where we could fit three full, uh, two hundred and fifty or three hundred foot fields. If we did try and, you know, go with one of the ones where we, we shoehorn it to to two hundred and twenty-five foot fields and, and then one three hundred foot field. It would seem to me, unless somebody can correct me, that we probably pushed ourselves out of a lot of marketability for tournaments rather than having three equal-sized fields.
Um, it, I mean, optimally, I'd love to have three three hundred foot fields. Um, you could have a, a larger one and a couple smaller ones. But typically what the tournament directors that we've been working with send an age group down. So they would send the twelves and unders or the tens and unders. Um, or at the, the community park, they would send the sixteen and unders. Um, they like to keep those groups together just because it's a round robin tournament. And they're playing all on the same size field, same size, everything. So, um, you know, we, we could use different sized fields, uh, but, um, typically, they're usually about the same size where, wherever you go.
Right, now, that was, that was kind of my, my observation or my question, that if we did have different sized fields, we probably would not be as attractive to people that want to send a group of kids and have them all equally playing on equal-sized fields.
Right.
Okay. And those are the only two issues I had right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Councilman Papinow. Councilmember Vanderburg.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have multiple questions in, in, uh, way I interpreted, uh, the presentation and the information given earlier this week, they're kind of interconnected. So the way I'm seeing it, this is just phase two, so we're not building out the entire, uh, property, correct? We're just building out, uh, like what shows on option one right now on the screen. We're just building out the green portion and west, correct?
So what, what we're doing today is we're updating the master plan only. Um, at a later point, we would come back to tell you what we plan on or what we're proposing to build, um, at this point. Uh, we obviously do not have enough money to build a community center or that, that phase, uh, to the southeast. Uh, we do have close to the money to build that whole sports complex, uh, for the baseball fields, softball fields. But at a later meeting, we will come back to you with what we are proposing to build at this time.
That's kind of to my other points, uh, we have one point seven million to spend or to use before the end of the year. If you don't have the money for building the community center, that is sorry, was that somebody trying to ask you in? Okay, so if we don't have the money to build the community center in that one point seven million, put it all together. So we're not really approving that, we're just approving the plan. It's harder. If we, like, if you look at option five, can one of the baseball diamonds be at a lower level? That would dual, dual purpose as a floodplain and a baseball diamond without affecting environmental impact study? Because if it's going to rain that hard, there's nobody's going to be on the, nobody's going to be at the park anyway, right?
Um, Leslie, that, those baseball diamonds go into a basin, correct? It's not a flat area. If you would have to grade that to a flat area to accommodate those baseball fields.
Unless you graded it at a depth of five feet instead of grade level with the rest of the park.
Leslie. Joe, maybe, Council, Councilmember Vanderburg, to answer your question, yes, you could essentially grade a basin to accommodate one of the baseball diamonds. Um, it would be, you know, some significant regrading and, uh, may, uh, trigger some additional environmental analysis. Um, as other elements of the park would have to be reconfigured, so, um, I don't know if Leslie, if you wanted to add anything, but.
And the only thing I would add now is that the, the current footprint of the basins are, are graded in with some gentle slide slopes that are used for, you know, you could use that for passive play area. If we were to grade, uh, around one or two of the basins and make, uh, the bottom of the basin, the baseball diamond, um, you would look, be looking at some higher steeply sharp slopes, especially along the, um, I guess that would be the westerly side, but the bottom part of your screen.
You're talking about on option five, it'd be like the center cell.
Yeah, I don't know if the option is to incorporate the two basins on the right and put those on the bottom of a basin. Um, but, you know, you could keep the slope on the upper screen intact, but on the lower side, um, you would be impacting your parking by getting those slopes in there.
I, I guess my overall question, is it possible within the timeframe without affecting environmental impact studies to drop one or two of the entire baseball diamond from, from the infield all the way out to center field, right and left field? The entire, uh, field lowered so that you could accommodate both the, the water basin storage required and the timeline and the larger fields? Because, you know, like in, in Manteca, they have like the league, big league of dreams, which would help draw people to this to generate revenue for the cities, which is something the city struggles with. And the larger the fields, the more variety the park can be for. And that's something I'd like, but I don't want to exceed all the things that have been mentioned, obviously.
Yeah, Councilmember Vanderburg, uh, what I would say is the answer to that question would be no, simply because we would not be able to do it within timeframe. We'd have to do some additional environmental analysis and that would, uh, you know, essentially put us beyond the, the time limitation of the grant.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Vanderburg. Councilmember Lozano.
Yeah, I have a, a, a few comments and some questions. Uh, some of the questions regarding money and timeframe, uh, were pretty much answered. I, I did have a question on, a- as I'm looking at it now, section seven, which is the implementation. It, it, it talks about bid in construction administration, uh, under, uh, six of that chart, project schedule. So I'm on page seventeen of the staff. Yes, that, the, the bottom portion there where it says six, four point one. What, what does that mean, that, that section?
So that section, uh, council member is basically indicating what the timeframe would, would be for, uh, basically completing the, the bid documents and putting it out to bid and, and constructing the improvements.
And it, it out to bid, meaning the three baseball fields?
So, yeah, when, uh, when the consultant contract So, yeah, when, when the consultant contract was approved back in June, the scope of work was essentially, you know, to review the master plan to look at some alternatives that could be potentially constructed within the timeframe and that would not be significantly differentiated from what was in the master plan. And then, and then the specifics on that were the rough grading for the ball fields, the restroom facilities and the roadway extension and parking area.
Okay.
So that's the improvements that those, that's the project essentially what would be put out to bid and constructed.
Excellent. Okay, thank you, thank you for that. So I, I do have a question about the restroom building in the, the baseball complex, we'll call it the complex. And I think that was clearly indicated in the option one actual slide. Yes, the slide 15, I'm sorry, staff report, page 15. So my, my question, yes. I see where the, the restroom facility is. It's hard to tell whether there is access to the restroom facility, to the turf field there, the ball slash soccer turf field. Is there any access to that?
There, there is an access gate to the southeast of the artificial turf field. We are also looking at adding restrooms to the current building that we have now that could easily be used by the artificial and grass turfs instead of having to use those.
Okay, that was my next question is, under M, it says restroom existing and new, so it would just be adding on new area to that, to that restroom?
Yeah. Mark Clarkson believes that we can add more restrooms to that building that we currently have.
I'm getting feedback. I don't know where that's coming from, but it was hard to hear you, Armando.
Mark Clarkson believes that we can get more restrooms added to the, the current restrooms that we have on the property.
Okay, okay. So, so my, again, going back to my question, I guess, let me just cut to the chase. Are these restroom slash concession facilities within the complex only going to be able to be used by those in the complex?
I do not want them to be. I'd like them to be used by both complexes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That was just trying to figure out, you know, without having construction drawings or anything, what that really looks like, okay.
That is our intent.
Okay. Perfect. Who's, well, that's an operational question. I won't get to that. That's for down the road. So my question again is, is this, is, is this, it looks like these are baseball fields. And I would like to offer, well, I guess, is that, that's my question is, is, is it planned that these are going to be big ball fields or softball fields?
No, well, there'll be skin in fields that are able, that you'd be able to use for baseball and softball.
Okay, because it's, I see grass on there. An old softball coach in me says, we don't have grass on softball fields, so.
Well, I, I grew up in Lodi and we played baseball on dirt infield, so I, you know.
All good. So my, my other question is this, the state grant, the timeframe is just what we've done to this point up through what Mr. Selling described as through the project, if you will. And then there's nothing after that. That's 1.7 million dollars worth of everything we're doing. Got it? Okay. So I, 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 I think that this, I think that proposal one or, or option one in my mind is the best option. There's no, in my mind, no arguing that. I think of the five options, that's the one that looks like it would work the best, have the less, least amount of impact on the community for many reasons, not only lighting, but traffic flow and things like that. I do, I do want to, I do want to address something that I talked to Mr. Heinz about today as well as Armando in the past, or Mr. Solis in the past. My, my, what I heard a lot in the presentation today was cities' desires and the project team's desires. I didn't hear a lot about desires. And having sat on a committee of user group participants in a much larger facility than this, in a different community, where it took a lot of work to get through it. At the end of the day, we had a facility that all of the user groups could get, could get behind and wrap their heads around in terms of not, not necessarily access, but what was the need of, of the, of the, of the community. And so what I brought up today with Mr. Heinz was, and I've, and I've mentioned this before, I'm thinking that this might have been a good opportunity to do a citywide parks, recreation and facilities master plan. Because like I said, I heard what the benefit only to the city was really in this in terms of, you know, tournaments and, and things like that. Again, I'm a proponent of that. I've, I've lived in that world. My, my kids played softball tournaments and traveled to Field of Dreams and and all of those places and, and, and I think the design as it's presented in option one helps work toward that end. But I'm just having a hard time when we said, you know, public input. And we got public input being, you know, we're going to send it, send it to the planning commission, the park and rec commission and the city council for public input. None of that, and again, no fault of anybody, probably the council, because we gave direction of what we wanted in June of 2021, but that's not public outreach in my mind. Public outreach is reaching out to the community and all of those things and I, and and I, and I, I'll turn your, your attention to page 17 of the staff on section six. Engagement. And again, this might be just a conversation really for a different day in terms of philosophy, but this is not a new conversation that I've, that I've, I've had in recent months, so I just want to throw that out there. I appreciate the work that everybody does, I really do. I just think at some point getting the folks that are going to be users and/or partners with the city and using the facility in the same room is, is appropriate. Again, I'm not, I've realized that it's a lot of work. And I say that from experience. As a softball league board member for many years, working with baseball leagues is a tough thing. And, you know, and coming to compromise and working with soccer and everybody in, 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 in the, in the room at the same time. But we were able to do it and, and, and the facility, which was mentioned earlier, is a great facility for kids in the community as well as the neighbors, so. I'll leave it at that and I'll let the rest of the council have their input. But like I said, I think we need as, as a governing body, we really need to look at whether or not a full parking rec and facility master plan is for the whole city is, is appropriate. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilor Lozano. I know we have a, someone with their hand raised from the public, which I am going to allow that in a moment as soon as I get some comments on myself. First, I'd like to ask anybody who's actually in Zoom who's not speaking now or has a question being directed to them, if you could please check your microphones because we're getting a lot of feedback and it's been difficult to understand some people speaking, so please have your mic on mute unless you're addressed and then you could respond. So my comments were covered by some of my fellow council members. I know Armando Solis reached out to me today to inquire if I had any concerns. At the time, I had a lot of thoughts, but nothing specific. I've had a chance to kind of digest this plan a little bit and listen to some of the things brought up by my other council members. First off, because it's most fresh in my mind, I would like to address what Councilmember Lozano said. I, I do feel no fault intended for anybody, but I do felt that, you know, looking at that timeline, that I didn't really feel like there was a real lot of really good public input. And that's not to discredit the design that you guys have presented. I think you guys have presented a lot of good designs and I'll comment on that in a minute. But I just think, you know, we, we like to talk about public input and this and that, and I think there's some things in this, in the city that are just so critical to have public input. And one would be on park space, you know, this is essentially for the community. And so I, I think it's important that we have that and I feel like, you know, to present at a planning commission or a parks or rec commission and say that, you know, well, you can, you know, have a public comment there, whatever, it's not really the most ideal outreach. And during COVID, you know, I mean, it's just, and unfortunately, it create, it created a unique set of circumstances. We're not able to have like a community, you know, a forum or something or a, a town hall where people could come and, and firstly, that COVID presented, you know, against that, but I think that I, I would, I don't know what the answer to that is, I, I, but I lean heavily with, with, with Councilman Lozano that I feel like we need to have, make sure we have full buy-in on whatever designs now. Again, I know we don't have a lot of money to build all this out and, and so with that said, I don't think that, um, I don't know how much our decision tonight to approve the conceptual drawing puts that into stone and, and it's hard to reverse anything or make any tweaks to that. I don't think, you know, I don't foresee any major tweak changes, but I, I, I would like to add a couple, but. So anyways, that's on that subject. Moving on past that, I, I agree also with some of the other council members that the layout of option one seems to be the most conducive to the environmental reports. I don't really think that moving the fields over into the other areas with the basin and all that is going to be ideal. I, I have concerns with, my biggest concern really with this plan is the fields, the size of the fields. I, I am concerned that we are limiting ourselves to only a certain age group. And I'm looking at this and I'm thinking, okay, you know, and maybe, let me ask a question real quick. Mr. Solis, how big are the fields at the softball complex now? Is it 300?
Those are approximately 300 feet.
Okay, thank you. So my, my, I mean, and I know it's already been mentioned by staff that ideally we would have liked to have 300 feet. And I just feel like 225 is just so small. I feel like, you know, and, and again, I think if we're thinking big picture here, you know, there's an ongoing discussion about the viability of the softball complex as we know it in Galt and what's that going to, is that going to exist in, you know, two years or five years from now? Is it, is, is the life expectancy of those fields at its end without a major? If we're talking about doing away with such fields, then we're left with no area where adult play can happen at all realistically. I mean, you can play on a 225 field. But I, I mean, it's not, I, I mean, it's not likely, so I just feel like we're really limiting ourselves. So I'm looking at this design, I'm thinking, you know, I mean, if there was a compromise of like getting 250, why could we not squeeze 250 of these fields? I think all we're looking at losing is maybe a row of parking on the H and F fields and on H, I, I think we might be encroaching on the roadway there, but maybe we can do a, a compromise of, you know, a little bit larger field, maybe with a taller fence. I know I've played at some places myself softball where they have really tall fences so that the balls can't go over. So I mean, maybe there's a compromise or maybe there's some tweaks that could be made. I don't think that, that a fence, taller fence is going to be a major change that would interrupt the timeline here. And I think the increasing of the fields, I think, could be an easy tweak if you started looking at losing a little bit of driveway space. It's, but I just really think 225 is really limiting. And if we're talking about, we don't know what's going to happen with the Galt softball complex, we are going to have zero play fields for adult in town. I just think that's a bad idea. So that's one thing. The other thing is, and this goes back to the public input side of things, is one thing I, I, I know you would have had if you would, we would have had better a better means of public input would be that, you know, we're only, we're only considering people, the sports aspect is, is if it's a soccer ball or, or, or a football or a tennis ball or whatever, but there's other sports that are big in the community that are, that are not used in any of these facilities here. And the one I mentioned specifically is the skate park. Our skate park now is basically, you know, it's, it's, it's requiring further maintenance. The life expectancy is probably not going to be very long. It was really just a, a, a simple thing we could put together for the interim, but all the surrounding communities around us, Elk Grove and, and, and Lodi have phenomenal skate parks. These are used by, you know, inline skaters and scooters and skateboards and even bicycles and all these things. And the one in, in Elk Grove, which is a concrete park, is very low maintenance because it's concrete. It's highly used. I've been there myself. And I just, I would love to have seen something like this in this plan, I think, and, and it is a low maintenance type of thing. And once you build it, it just requires not much. So I don't know if there's any way we could tweak and throw, and it doesn't even have to be very big. It could be very small, but I just feel like the skate park in Galt i- is, is, it needs to be replaced at some point. And if we're building something here for the entire community, we need to be thinking of other types of sports and not just traditional sports. The area that I look at here, up on, above the star here where it says original tennis court locations, you have a P and a U. I feel like that area there, that grass area there could easily accommodate something that I speak. Or even over to the south of the community center, back in that little grass area. I mean, I think there's a lot of little clever areas that something like that could be added and it could be small, but it would just really check a big box in this community, I think, in a huge way. I, I would like to see something like that added. But overall, I agree with option one as being the best as far as the layout and, and not interfering with the timeline too much. Those are the tweaks that I would like to see, you know, for, for my full blessing. And other than letters from the community, like we had a letter that wasn't mentioned from Ms. Shans that lives on Sergeant Road. She asked about improvements to Sergeant Road and being, being a narrow road and having, you know, drainage ditches and being a dangerous road. I, I agree with that. And I'm wondering if, you know, if we're going to have any kind of road improvement planned on that area at all, once this, this park becomes a reality in full. So with that, I'll wrap up my questions. I would like to hear maybe some input from the design staff on some of those questions. So if my, either Ms. Frazier or Mr. Chess, thank you, please.
Yeah, I can go ahead and address the baseball softball field length. We did look early on in the process of trying to keep the ball fields in their original location, but eke out a little bit more length and actually take Sergeant Avenue. While we knew we couldn't completely remove the access, but what we tried to do is look to see if Sergeant Avenue, that connection to Sergeant Avenue could be utilized as just emergency vehicles only to try to narrow the roadway width and that would allow more room for the ball fields. Unfortunately, we were told that, that the, when the EIR was processed, and that was based on traffic circulation and traffic counts and that it would send us back for an EIR revision if we impacted the circulation or the traffic counts with that and made that an emergency vehicle access, which is why we decided to keep the access roadway the current width that it was in the original improved master plan. And we actually were able to just eke out a little bit more. They're actually about 230 in, in field length, but we couldn't go any further than that without impacting the connection to Sergeant, to Sergeant Avenue. And as far as sort of in the, the bulb or the knuckle of the access road, we couldn't meet design standards of getting that road in and the curvature if we extended the length of the ball fields on the other side and i- if we push those ball fields out any further in length, that, that curvature would not, we could not construct that. That would, we would have to revise the access almost like a, a three-way stop is probably what we'd have to do to connect into the existing access roadway that's already been constructed. So keeping the ball fields where they're currently located, we did try to expand them and see what options we had and then ultimately we ended up with 230 feet.
What, and, and I understand those and that, that makes some sense from, from some standpoints that I was not aware of or wouldn't be aware of really. What about the, and I, I wish I knew offhand what the fields in Lodi were overall. What about the, um, and I, I wish I knew offhand what the fields in Lodi were overall off of Stockton Street. Those are small fields. They have tall fences. I'd be curious. But, um, what about, what about, uh, some kind of compromise with, with the increased height of the fences so that they could accommodate adult play and, and not have balls be going into the parking lot on every at bat?
I don't know, Perry, if you want to feel better or Armando, you have more information on that?
I think I feel, I'm sorry, my screen's frozen, but, um, um, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
I would honestly never schedule any adult games at that location at 225 feet. You, you would, they would just hit it completely out of that park. They're hitting it 400 feet at the complex. There's no way I would, I, I could allow a, an adult game to be played there. The oldest would be, uh, high school girl softball would be appropriate for that, that field.
Well, this definitely brings up a larger discussion about what are we going to do to accommodate adult sports then for, you know, with the, with the life expectancy of the current complex. Um, and I fear for this because we're obviously talking about a golf master plan that possibly could, and, and, you know, impact those, those fields. And I was always under the impression that their natural evolution was that those fields would somehow find a new home at Walker Park. And now the reality is that that's not true.
So that was my hope also is that, and, and that was part of why we did this update to see what we could get, get done. But obviously, after having the discussions with the design team, we're here and that's what we can do for this site.
Well, I just feel like, looking at this, you know, your main, you know, when you design something, you have your main focus, like what is the, what is the jewel of this project? And, you know, there's many smaller little jewels in this thing. But I think the one thing that's your epicenter really, and this is your softball fields and your, and your two soccer fields. And so I think if you're going to say, you know, that we're going to make that the, the center point of this, of this, um, project, but yet it's going to be kind of, you know, constricting in certain aspects. I just, you know, the problem is we have lots of places that people can play youth sports in Galt, um, on small fields. But now we hear we are building more fields and they're going to be small. I, I kind of think about Mr. Batondo's comment, um, you know, I don't agree with everything he said in his comment, but I do agree with a big portion of it and that being one that I, I do, I'm concerned about adult sports because, uh, sports is not just for people under the age of 13. And so how are we going to remedy that? How are we going to make this, if this is going to be the, you know, the, we have nothing like this at Community Park, which is our other big park. So, you know, when Galt is 50,000 people, I doubt there'll be any other parks except Walker Park and Community Park and whatever else is left, which leaves no fields for adult play. That's just a big, I'm just really caught up on that right now, um, personally. I don't know. Uh, Ms. Fraser, um, what would be your comments about the other thing I mentioned about some kind of, uh, ability to incorporate at some point, maybe later in the project, whatever, some kind of cement styled skate parks of sorts, if you know what I'm referring to?
I do. I didn't know, Perry, if you had any input on whether that would, there would be enough space south of the community center?
Definitely. I think skateboard parks, uh, these days, they can be, they're, they're almost like a manufactured kit of parts where you can bring in a, a skateboard consulting team that even put together the pieces and have them in their library. And so, you know, working with the community to try to figure out, you know, how big that needs to be, how extensive it needs to be. I think it could easily be, you know, swapped out for one of the other areas and uses. And or, you know, where you mentioned P and U in those areas as well. Very likely, you know, candidate for that, uh, for that use. So I would say, yeah, definitely it's an opportunity.
Well, thank you. I know that Lodi Skate Park is, is pretty phenomenal. And I hear a lot of youngsters, uh, really love it. It's, it's a fabricated, uh, park, you know, that, that does require obviously more maintenance. But I just don't know what would be more conducive to, to cost-wise to do concrete. I know maintenance-wise, the concrete, uh, idea would be much more, um, you know, probably have a longer lifespan and be less maintenance required. But I would like to see something that, I would like to hear if my other council members are open-minded to see some little design tweak and such. But I think, I like I said, I just really feel like we need to be checking a box with a huge amount of children in this community that are not baseball and football and players. So, um, I have a couple of other things, but I'm going to wait. And what I'm going to do now is I'm going to let public, I, when we have one public comment person, we're going to let that person speak. And then I'm going to go back to my council members for, uh, another round of questions. So, uh, Ms. Huber, could you please let us know, do we, or Ms. Rodicker, do we have a public?
We do have a public comment, um, or a raised hand on the attendee side. Um, the gentleman, his initials JB, I'm going to go ahead and allow him to speak. JB, you have five minutes. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Joe Batondo. I already got my comment read into the thing. I've just been listening. I appreciate everybody's work on this stuff. I spoke or had a comment read into the planning commission, uh, meeting a week or two ago, whatever it was. And I apologize for missing the Parks and Rec Commission meeting, but I was working. I do agree with a lot of what was said about the lack of public input. I feel like we're rushing this project through just to get 1.7 million dollars. That will basically just fund a parking lot and a bathroom. I would like to see the plan rejected, sent back a new EIR study done to see how we can best use this property with actual input from the community. Maybe by council, creating an ad hoc committee with people from all the different local sports clubs, along with other members of the community and maybe a council member or two on that committee to actually see what the community wants, what the community needs, rather than rushing through and spending millions of dollars on something that may or may not be needed. This is a huge chunk of property and we only have one shot at building it out correctly. To, to just rush and get it done for 1.7 million dollars. There's been plenty of other government agencies that have gotten free money from the state that have decided not to take that free money and do something right. The San Joaquin County Sheriff's Department a few years ago turned down multiple millions of dollars to build a new jail because they didn't have the money to stop it. That money will be available again at some other point. I just, I don't want to see the city rush this and lose out on a potentially beautiful park. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Batondo.
Thank you.
In regards to his comment, I, I want to revisit just so the council's clear before we all can receive more questions. What the timeline entails and, and give us the breakdown again on this and the money and, and everything, what we're looking at. How much can we build and what the ultimate plan design here looks like? Someone could please do that. Mr. Selling?
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, if Armando's okay, I can, I can speak to that. So essentially, you know, it's been noted, maybe just to kind of, you know, reiterate it. The city received this grant, uh, funding. However, there were, there is a tight timeline to it. And so what we were looking at was, okay, how can we stay within the confines of the plan? So we wouldn't trigger any extensive environmental review to, to stay within the, uh, the time constraints of the grant. And then, you know, best meet the, uh, the me, the needs that we could with this amount of funding. And also minimize the amount of ongoing operational maintenance costs. And so that's where, um, you know, prior, uh, items that came before the council were clarifying the limitations, those limitations, those constraints we were operating under. And, and how we arrived at, at constructing the much-needed bathroom facilities is, as we, at least from a public work standpoint, it was communicated that there were, you know, uh, insufficient bathroom facilities out there. And then the need for additional parking because parking was spilling over onto the adjacent public streets. And then, um, to do what we could, at least, uh, as far as the, the ball fields went. So, uh, so again, that's, that was the constraints that we were under. And, uh, um, and how we, you know, have arrived at, at what we could do with that amount of grant funding within those time constraints.
So I think, I think I speak probably on behalf of some of their council members that I was under the impression that when we spoke about the 1.7 million in the, the bathrooms and the, uh, the restrooms and the, uh, parking was, we got this money and, you know, we can, this is all we can do with it. We can't really do anything else. So, so that really, to me, I didn't feel like there was any pressure of committing to a design because we were just going to be adding some parking and some restrooms. But now it seems that it's morphed into, hey, here's a design and we have to make a decision or we're going to lose the money, we're picking some time. And now I just feel like we're up against the ropes right now. And that didn't seem like that was the way it was presented to me unless I just was completely naive in the beginning and, you know, a few months ago. But, uh, I, I just wonder, am I correct to say that like, that's where we're at? It's like we have to approve the entire design in order to suffice this or what?
Well, per the schedule that you saw on there, uh, essentially, yeah. I mean, we've got until the end of this year. And so, you know, to do the, to complete the design and then to, uh, go forward with the bid process, which takes a few months, and then the actual construction. When you basically look at, you know, to stay within that time constraint, that's, that's really kind of where we are. Unfortunately, the grant didn't, you know, this grant, my understanding, at least anyway, the limitations were they were really looking for shovel-ready projects. And so, you know, having had, the city having had the master plan, again, to stay within that design or, you know, to essentially, um, you know, construct improvements within that, uh, already approved design, uh, was really what was driving this. And then like I noted too, you know, and maybe it's kind of been a little bit, um, you know, lost in the shuffle here is the, uh, the need to minimize the ongoing operation and maintenance costs. And so not to construct facilities that, you know, are going to have these ongoing costs associated with them. So, uh, minimal costs, obviously, you know, to clean a bathroom, you know, weekly or whatever it is. You know, parking was really no cost and, and the roadway, you know, once you construct a roadway, you really have minimal ongoing costs for probably at least a decade or so. So, so again, those were elements that had, you know, that, that ticked that box as well, uh, that minimized those ongoing costs. So.
Okay. I'm going to go back to the council now. I want to hear some input from the rest of my council members. On that, since we've, you know, furthered this discussion along and we've had some more input. So I'm going to start with, um, in order with our Vice Mayor Sandu. Please go ahead. Do you have any to add? Your microphone's off, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Give me the opportunity. And you know, I did heard from all the council member, uh, uh, council member Lozano, uh, mayor and, uh, everybody else. You know, if there is this, you know, the option one is, is the good option, but at this time, I believe. And if there is any changes, we able to do it, uh, we should do it. If, if that's time, we can do it. My, my next question is, this is the updated master plan and this is just the updated master plan. And we are not building all this, right, Mike?
Correct. We are only, uh, at this time, uh, staying within the scope that we had to, for the additional, um, bathroom facilities, the parking area, the roadway extension, and then to do probably the rough grading for the, uh, ball fields.
Yeah. My, my next question is if we need in the future, because we are not building again, we update this master plan again or there, there can be a problem with the?
No, absolutely. Uh, the plan could be amended, you know, to, to Mayor Farmer's point about the skate park. You know, I mean, something like that could probably, as, as you're probably familiar with the one in Lodi at Kofu Park, it's down in a basin, uh, itself. So there may be, you know, an opportunity to, to put a feature like that at some point down in one of the, one of the basins here that is shown on the, uh, on the plan. The other thing is, and maybe not to get too far out on this, but, uh, I know there's that, that front area that, uh, belongs to the school district and, and, uh, you know, I don't know what their plans are. They were developed that for a school site, but if that were to ever become potentially available, there may be an opportunity to, you know, add, uh, even ball fields or whatnot there potentially. So just a thought. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, the, the other question is, for example, if we may be going to tweak or something going to add on that, that is, it's how long might we can take? Or then we have a problem to reach, uh, the deadline to end of this year? Are we taking the risk or we may be able to do it?
Can you repeat the question? I, I just want to make sure I understood you. I think I know what you said, but I just want to make sure.
What I'm talking about, for example, uh, just at a hypothetical, if, if, if we don't prove that plan and we will say, okay, let's bring that plan a little bit tweak the way, maybe more input from the community or from the council. It's can be very much, it's can be very hard to meet the deadline or is kept some kind of flexibility?
Yeah, e- essentially, we would not be able to meet the, uh, time constraints of the grant. If we were to kind of hit the pause button here and, and do some additional outreach, um, to gain input. So.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was muted. Does that conclude your questions, Vice Mayor, at this time?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Councilmember Papinow, do you have any additional input on what we've been talking about?
Well, Mr. Snelling, or Selling, sorry, started down the, the road I was looking at. A school district property funding is, uh, a twisted maze. However, I do see in the future that, uh, you know, the school district's not going to end up going forward with that as planned. But what becomes of the property, what they're allowed to do with it due to the education funding restrictions is kind of a mess that's going to take some years to unwind. And I'm looking up at the figure eight shape of this right now. And given the basins and the floodplain, you know, I don't see that there's any possible way after we've looked at the other options, that you're going to fit an adult-sized, uh, complex in here at all. And I don't, I don't see where you can put three, 300-foot fields anywhere in this. You know, even if you took out the existing soccer and football fields and, uh, it, this, this is just not something that was ever going to satisfy that need. So. You know, if we go forward, we've created a youth, uh, baseball softball complex, period. Those are not bad things. But as you pointed out, if we want to satisfy adult participants, we're going to be looking elsewhere. And whether that's in the school district property or as some part of the golf market plan. You know, we'd have to, to do that elsewhere. Certainly as far as the skate park, um, you talked about, you know, that, that seems, uh, a, a no-brainer, to put it bluntly, um, that that could be done even in a, a basin. And we certainly have the ability and authority to update this master plan as we go. You know, we just have, eh, eh, building, you know, from, from north to south here. With this money, we're going to get so far and we essentially locked ourselves into a youth, uh, baseball softball complex in a parking lot. You know, the money for the community center, the money for, for everything else isn't there out of this. And therefore, all those other things, uh, heading up north into the basins is going to be, you know, flexible and things that we can come back to. So that's, uh, that's kind of my, my observation at this point. And, um, you know, it sounds like it's a, it's a little bit late to, um, use this funding and move forward, um, without stopping to, you know, take the time and think, is this, you know, really that we don't want to have this small baseball softball complex? And, you know, we have to, to scrap the whole thing, even though, as I said, that this property will never fit an adult complex. I'll, uh, hear from the other council members.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. All very good points. Thank you. Um, Councilmember Vanderburg.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm curious, you know, there's multiple phases here. So what will 1.7 million dollars give us on what we're looking at on the updated master plan?
So for this project, essentially, what, uh, what we've estimated that the 1.7 million, along with some Quimby fees, I would say, uh, that the city has, uh, what it will get us essentially is this restroom. Uh, that the city has, uh, what it will get us essentially is this restroom facility. The roadway extension out to Sergeant Avenue and, uh, and, and the parking area. Um, and, and probably the rough grading of the fields. So, um, you know, that we set up for, for a future, should we? Uh, you know, be fortunate enough to, uh, to find some additional grant funds and, and, uh, you know, and kind of solve the, uh. The issue of the long-term ongoing, uh, maintenance and operational costs.
When you say yours, you know, just to clarify, you're saying the three fields next to the, the, uh, larger. What's in blue on the screen or on my screen? I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, the three fields, the three baseball fields that are, uh, that are shown could be the grading for those.
Me not being a, a big baseball fan, sorry, everybody, uh, is. On one of the, one of the slides, it showed you could extend the, the fields a little bit larger. Those will not, still will not accommodate. Or adult softball, even with a, an extended, uh, fence in height.
I, I would recommend that we didn't. Um, with the technology of the balls and bats today's and the strength of these players. They're just, they would hit them into those homes, uh, off a sergeant, um, if they're playing in the, the diamonds that are closest to there. Um, I know the map does not show homes there, but there, there will be a home right, uh, south of those baseball fields, softball fields.
I understand that. Well, I guess my point is, would people, could we attract some adult baseball? If the fields were, you know, made to say that you could make them two fifty with a higher fence, would that attract adult baseball?
I would not feel comfortable scheduling adult, uh, softball there at two fifty with the higher fence. I mean, even the armory down in Lodi is a, a shorter field with the higher fence and they're just being hit out of that, those fields also.
Okay. So if it's just grading, then it's an unplayable field at this time. So you would use the money, satisfy the grant and you still could. Potentially move the fields, yes or no?
So. So, oh, go ahead. Still, what did you say? I'm sorry, Councilmember. Still move something?
If we spend the one point seven million dollars, we get graded fields, but those doesn't mean they're playable, right? There's not, it's a low maintenance. Satisfy the grant option, correct?
Correct. It would essentially be just a level area. I mean, kids could go out there and play or something. It wouldn't be marked or anything. So.
Right. So long-term, you could satisfy the grant, do another, uh, study. And change where things are, correct?
Sure. You can definitely amend the plan.
Okay. Thank you.
That's Lozano.
Yeah, I will be absolutely brief. Um, if you look at the original proposed project or the master plan for, you know, from two thousand four. And then you click on option one, it is exactly the same with the exception of an additional, uh, field. As baseball, I'm going to call it a baseball field. So it's what it looks like. Um, and we've moved the courts to a different location and increased our parking is, is how I look at it. I like the design. Um, I, I don't want that to be misconstrued. I think it's the best design for what we have out there in terms of, of facility. Or in terms of acreage and, and land. Um, and so, I mean, I'm, I'm, and, and again, I think later on down. As we get to developing the actual fields and community center, we're going to have. Um, the ability to have that public input to change things around. Maybe that, maybe that. Community center is turned one, you know, ninety degrees and it looks different and maybe, I don't know. I think we have the ability to do that. My comments earlier were more directed to the more long-term. Um, community input issues as it relates to parks and recreation facilities. So. I, I'm, I am willing to support this plan moving forward. Um, I don't see it as, um. Being rushed to get it done. And we made a deliberate decision in, in June of twenty twenty to, to begin this process. I like that. Again, I like the project. I just believe that, um. In the, moving forward, uh, there may be some different things that we can do to, to get that public input. Um, so I would be willing to support it, uh, support the master plan as presented today.
Thank you, Councilmember Lozano. Um. I think to jump on what Councilor Vanderburg was saying, I think, I always want to be clear. I think maybe just to make sure he didn't misunderstand that. The one point seven million is going to get us the parking lot and the restrooms and degrade the fields, but. It's not going to really allow us any change with the fields. I think that's kind of where you're going to your line of questioning, Councilor Vanderburg. I think. That even though they wouldn't be completed, it's still going to be under the envelope of this. Design, more or less. I think anything beyond the fields is probably open to change and to be tweaked. Uh, moving forward before construction, but once we start grading and doing that, I think that we've already committed ourselves to the fields being in that location. And in part would mean that they are going to be youth baseball softball fields, which, um, you know, after hearing we talk, it just seems like there's just. There just might not be, I guess, any way to really make adult fields in this particular property without some major design changes. Um. Whether or not, I mean, it's not, you know, it's a, it's a decision of the entire council and unless the entire council wanted to scrap and start from zero. You know, uh, that's where the, that's what the fields are ultimately going to be. I think Kevin, uh, excuse me, Councilor Papinow. Uh, kind of hit the nail on the head where he's like, really what we've committed ourselves to is a, as a, as a softball, a youth softball, baseball. Complex with some other amenities such as basketball courts, community center, et cetera, et cetera, to be determined, I think later. But. So, um, and then as far as the outreach, uh, I definitely think, you know, that we failed to get maximum outreach. Um, I don't know if that warrants us starting over. I just, I'm disappointed that we didn't get more. But I do believe what, uh, Councilor Lozano said is that there is an opportunity to still get such output or such input. Um, moving forward, um, when the rest of this builds out, and I think that we have the opportunity to do some great things with the rest of the property. Um, and, uh, and have that. I just want to be clear on what I just said there. I want it to be crystal clear from Mr. Selling, uh, Mr. Solis. Or whoever else that I am reading that correctly, that even though if we approve this plan this evening. And move forward with the one point seven, anything beyond the softball fields. Design is open to change. Um, and it wouldn't require like a major. I don't want to be here in six months and say, hey, I want to live whatever. Well, we approved this plan. We can't really change anything. I want to be clear that, that there's still some. Tweakability there to the rest of it. Am I clear on that?
Yes, I would say you are. Now, there are some. Constraints as, as, uh, you know, the consultant noted, particularly with the, uh, the drainage basins. So. You know, we will have to make sure that we have capacity to hold the amount of water that they need to hold. Uh, but beyond that, you know, I think you could view it essentially as, you know, as. You know, pieces on a board that you can, you know, move around or change if you wanted. I mean. You know, one example might be if, if the community were to decide, there's no need for a community center. Um, you know, obviously that's going to take an amendment and if that were approved. That frees up space for whatever other potential elements you might want to add, you know, and so. So you really can amend the plan beyond that, um, you know, at, at the council's, uh, you know, discretion. So, uh, I don't know.
Yeah, that's, that's what I meant. I didn't meant major design changes that, you know, like Mr., uh, like Councilor Lozano mentioned, you know, maybe. Something gets turned a little bit one way or the other, or, you know, maybe we find a way to put a skate park in here like I would love to see. But things like that. But I, I honestly, you know, I understand that option one, that means, you know, this is going to be kind of what we're doing in this area. This is where the softball fields are going to be and so on. Just, we wouldn't really be able, you know, to dramatically change it. I get that. Um, I just want to clarify that we still had some flexibility moving forward as funding becomes available to make some changes and alterations with. Community input like we've been discussing to get those things. There might be something else that we're not thinking of, that somebody would really love to see, and I'd love to hear about it. Um, before this whole thing is completely built out. So, um.
Yes, I, I mean, just to answer the question, the plan is amendable.
Okay. Um, one last just quick thing about earlier about what Mr. Lozano was saying. Um, about the, well, actually, everybody was talking about was the policy of keeping the park open. I think it is very important and Mr. Patondo made a very good point. With reminding us that this is, you know, community park and we need to be conscious of that as we create things like this that are. You know, it's great to have things we can have tournaments and all that kinds of stuff, but at, at the end of the day, it's the community park used to be access to the community as much as possible. And I would actually love to. Revisit that conversation, um, you know, uh, like Mr., I think it was Mr. Lozano mentioned. Maybe bring that to the rat commission or something and, and talk about that, um, because we, we need to make accessibility, um, you know, the utmost. Um, as we can. So, um, so with that being said, if anybody else has any further comments. Um, any council members have any further questions or like to say anything? Do we have any additional hands raised online?
We do not have anybody online.
Thank you, Ms. Rucker. Councilman Papinow, you want to say something?
Well, not to belabor, but I just want to be sure that I'm correct. Um. As I said, I, I see that as simply a youth complex, which is great, that, that may be marketable. Um. And quite frankly, it's the only ball fields that are going to work with this figure eight property. If we, uh, the community and we decided that that was not useful to us and we didn't want it. I know we talked about that we can make little amendments earlier. Say we wanted to make a large amendment. And move the community center down into where one of the ball fields is. And put a skate park where one of the other ones is. And do something else with that other space out there. It won't work for ball fields, but do something else with it. Major changes like that, are we going to run into a new EIR? Um, you know, assuming we don't mess with the basins, um, or are we that amendable?
I'll defer to Mr. Hoffman, but the short answer is yes.
Yeah, absolutely. You could change, uh. The master plan, you can make amendments to it. I, I think you would, you just have to see what the, the tweaks are. I think when we start this process. We want to make sure that we weren't putting new facilities in there that changed traffic counts, the change of lighting. The change noise that impacted adjacent property owners in any way. But I mean, you, it, it depends on the level. And the depth of the amendment that you want to do. If it's staying within the context of what's there. And the community center goes away or it gets smaller, or you put a skate park or you put some pickleball courts in there. That could be minor, but you could do a major amendment as well. It just might change the environmental document. If that makes sense.
Yeah, that does make sense. I appreciate the answer.
And once you know the proposed changes, you know, on the example that you gave. Then it determines what studies need to be done and, and then what those impacts are from those changes are determined. And then the level of. Of environmental document is, uh, is pretty apparent, whether it's an EIR, whether it's a negative declaration or. Or what mitigation there may need to be additional mitigation. So.
Thank you. That, yeah, that being said, I mean, I, these ball fields are not going to satisfy. Everyone and every purpose, but I do think they'd be an asset. Um, and I, I think that this is. It's about the, the most efficient and the best use we can make of this, uh, this odd shaped property. So I'd be inclined to. To support this portion of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Thank you, uh, Councilmember Papinow. Um. I, 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 um. I think that, uh. Uh, what I would like to see is when funding becomes, it should, should, let's just assume hypothetically that we just get approved tonight by the council. Uh, I would like to see if funding becomes available to go beyond what we're doing with the one point seven. That we have a clear strategy of public engagement better than what we just did up to this point with this. And I mean, you know. Again, with COVID aside, you know, if it's a town hall or it's some kind of formal meeting set up just for the community, um. I want to make sure that we have a clear strategy for that before we go to spend any additional money beyond this one point seven. And make sure that what we are going to build out here is what the community wants. And, um. If, if, if that would be the case, and I think if my council would agree with, um, that, that would make me feel better about this. Um. So. I would. Uh, does anybody want to? Make a motion as to such or make a motion of something else. Um, at this point, I think we're at a point where we're looking for a motion. To approve, um, this, uh. This with, with any. Any particular things that someone wanted to add in their motion. So. Do I have anything from anyone?
I'll make a motion to approve the updated master plan.
Approved to adopt a resolution by, um, Councilor Papinow.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lozano. I would like to raise a second motion. Um. I would like to raise a motion that we approve the resolution of proving the Walker plan as presented tonight. With the, uh. With the addition of clear direction to staff that we will. Um, get with council and come up with a clear strategy for public outreach, um, beyond the expenditure of the one point seven million. Uh, if anybody would give me a second on that or.
I would second that.
Uh, moved by Mayor Farmer, seconded by Councilmember Vanderburg. Um, I believe we've voted on the second motion first. Is that correct, Tina?
Yes, that was correct. Yeah.
Do we need any more clarification on that second motion or is that good enough?
Yes, I understand it. And plus I can go back and, but I do understand. Thank you.
Okay. I have, yes, any?
I have a, just a point of discussion on the second motion. Um. I, I, I would be able to support that in concept. Um, however, I believe. I, I, I don't believe that we need to make a motion stating that just because the, the authority of our board or of our governance. Is to give staff clear direction. Um, and, and, uh, so that, that's just what makes it a little confusing for me is. Is that I believe what we do is give staff direction about what, uh, community input or, or anything. Um, and so, uh, I would just raise that, that question. Um.
What about if the motion was revised to, um. To put in motion such input, uh, as soon as possible, like we start that process now. Or something like that.
If I might, um, Mayor, you could potentially adopt the resolution and then have a second motion that provided the direction to staff on a moving forward basis. Um, that, that might solve everybody's issues.
Okay. So not if that, if I was to do that in this instance, then I will withdraw my second. I would withdraw my motion and wait for this first one to go before a vote.
Right. You could withdraw your motion. Uh, they could approve the motion that's then on the floor and then you could do a new motion, just a separate. Motion, not a resolution that would give direction to staff as to what the council would like to see staff do with respect to implementation.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Diner. With that said, then I will withdraw my motion. So with only one motion on the floor as to approve the resolution. Of Walker Community Park Plan as presented tonight by staff. Uh, was moved by, it was a motion was made by Councilor Papinow. I forget who made the motion. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Papinow and seconded in by Councilmember Lozano.
Okay. Can I have a roll call vote on that motion, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papinow.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
No.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Hi. I would like to now make a additional motion to give direction to staff to. Formally come up with a process or strategy to engage the public on. The community master plan beyond the. The, uh, one point seven million that we've acquired tonight.
I second that.
Moved by Mayor Farmer. Moved by Mayor Farmer, seconded by Councilmember Vandenberg. Have a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Papinow, please.
Just, just a brief comment. Now that we have a motion, a second on the table. As Councilmember Lozano kind of said, I, I think it's. It goes without saying that council or that, uh, city staff and city manager take their direction from us. We have all, however, expressed the need for public input, uh, beyond what we had in this particular process. So. That being said, I don't think it's necessary, however, to make it clear to the public that, uh, we will be looking for input. I will be inclined to, uh, to support your motion.
I appreciate that. And I do understand, um, your, your point. Um, I think I'm just looking at. Look at to make it official where it just doesn't get put on the back burner and it becomes an official directive. As to, you know, whether we're going to form an ad hoc committee or we're going to just set up a public, uh, meeting, hearing for say three, four. I mean, obviously we don't have the funding, so it could be a while, but I want that process to get started. I don't want to be like something that gets. Thrown on a shelf. That's pretty much the reason for my motion, if that makes sense. Okay. Thank you, sir. Um, Tina, if you would like to do a roll call.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papinow.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Hi. Motion passes five to zero. I was apologized earlier. Actually, the motion earlier passed, uh, four to one. I forgot to state that. Is that correct, Ms. Hubert?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I did not put that. Well, thank you again for all the input tonight from, um. Public and all the staff, um, for presenting this and, uh, all your work on that and look forward to working with some of you hopefully soon on, uh. On anything for the rest of the property. So, uh, thank you. And all of you have a good evening. They're going to be signing off. Thanks. Okay, gonna be moving on to the next item. M. Communication. Ms. Hubert?
Uh, none this evening.
Thank you. Next item is N. City Clerk's report. Item number one, subject beautification committee appointment. Councilor Papinow to appoint, uh, Amber, I'm sorry, Amy Sandu. To the beautification committee to fill a vacant position with term ending December 2024. Ms. Hubert?
Okay, so at the December 15th, 2020 city council meeting, there were not enough applicants for Councilmember Papinow to make an appointment. The clerk's office received Amy Sandu's application on January 19th, 2021. And she does meet the qualification stated in Galt Municipal Code 2.90.040. So, um, it is Councilmember Papinow's appointment. And do you have any other comments?
Uh, just, uh, thank you to Mrs. Sandu for stepping up and, uh, taking on the responsibility.
Okay, thank you.
I too would like to echo that. And, uh, thank you, Amy, for your continued, uh, service to the community on that. Committee and you know that it's, uh, a committee that's. Close to my heart and, uh, I enjoyed working with you before. And, and so, um, thank you again for continuing that service.
Mayor, she is on the line and has her raised, um, her hand raised. If you want to give her a moment to speak.
Please.
Thank you. Amy, if you want to unmute your mic, um, you can go ahead and speak. Amy, you need to unmute your mic.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
There you go. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Uh, I just wanted to say thank you to, uh, Councilman Papinow. For the opportunity for me to, uh, step on to continue on. With the beautification committee that I've been there for four years already. So I'm hoping that I can make the changes. That keep it clean and keep it looking good, what we can do for it. So, um, I would really like, thank you very much. I appreciate it for your appointing me.
You're welcome and thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Uh, we don't need any, uh, action on that. That's, uh, correct, Tina. Moving on to item number two, subject is the Commission on Aging Appointment. Uh, Ms. Hubert?
Uh, the recommendation is Councilmember Lozano appoint Bob Wilson to the Commission on Aging to fill a vacant position and remaining term. Ending December 2022. Uh, Councilmember Lozano appointed Sherilyn Khan and on November 5th. 2019 and she submitted her resignation on December 9th, 2020. The clerk's office received Mr. Wilson's application on December 20th, 2020. And he does meet the qualifications stated in Galt Municipal Code 2.97.040. Councilmember Lozano, do you have any comments?
I do. I, uh, had the opportunity to speak at length with, uh, Mr. Wilson. Uh, last week, I believe it was, and, uh, he comes highly recommended, uh, from, uh, a member of the, uh, Commission on Aging or, uh, currently serving. Uh, Mr. Wilson has just a ton of energy and, uh, and is, uh, done some volunteer work al- already with. Uh, the Senior Resource Center and, and working on some things with Bob Belay. So, uh, I, I am proud to, uh, appoint. Mr. Wilson to the Commission on Aging, uh, and I know he'll do just a fantastic job. I don't know if he's on the line tonight. Uh, but if he is, I'd like to offer him an opportunity to speak as well.
He's not on the line tonight.
All right.
Well, thank you for your service, Mr. Wilson. I look forward to having your word. If no other council member has any comment on this. And do we need public comment? Ask for public comment on this as well or no, Tina?
Uh, we do, and we do not have any written comments.
Okay, and, and no hands raised?
Correct. No, no hands are raised.
Okay, thank you. Well, with that, we will proceed to our next item, uh, on the agenda, on the agenda, item O, comments by staff. Mr. Heinz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I don't have any comments personally, other than to reiterate the, uh. Uh, the information I gave regarding, uh, the COVID-19 pandemic and encouraging our folks to. Take advantage of the website signups either via the city or the county, uh, to, uh, make sure that you're, um, available and, um. Can access the vaccine when those vaccines become available. So, um, and also again, take care of yourselves and take care of each other. Uh, I'm going to move to the staff and we'll start with, uh. Chief Kalanowski.
Good evening, Council. I only have two quick items. The first item is, um, members of the organization will be in attendance at. Deputy Adam Gibson's funeral, um, tomorrow. And we have a limited number of folks that are going, so we have a, a small group going, including our honor guard. Our K-19 and, um, some motor units. So we'll be well represented, but a limited number for inside the. The funeral itself. And second of all, this month, you'll see, uh, information on our Facebook. Uh, we're doing some outreach with, um, Black History Month. We've been doing that for, this will be our third year now. And because of COVID, we have to be, um. Have some, uh, different approaches. And so we're going to be doing some postings each week. Um, we're going to have a recommendation for a movie. And highlighting some business owners and Assemblyman Cooper and some of our youth. And so you may have seen a post, um, yesterday on what we're launching. And so we'll be doing that. Uh, each Sunday during the month. And so we wanted to keep that going in spite of COVID-19. Um, but with that, I have nothing further. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, Finance Director Claire Tyson.
The Finance Department has nothing further to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Public Works Director Mike Seling.
Uh, thank you, City Manager. I, I just wanted to, uh, recognize, uh, you know, city staff and in general, I think it was primarily a joint effort between, uh. Police Department and Parks and, and Public Works in responding to the, uh, the recent storms and particularly the severe winds that we had. Uh, we had about, I think, 14 or 15 trees down. Unfortunately, two of them, uh, took out a couple of cars, uh, but, uh, no injuries or anything. So, uh, but we did assist. Property owners and, and, uh, in helping to, uh, uh, you know, remove the, uh, the trees and. And, uh, get streets and whatnot, uh, back open again and, and strong drains flowing. So. Uh, but I also want to commend the, uh, the citizens, the constituents for, uh, keeping their, uh. Their gutters and whatnot cleaned up of leaves and other debris. Uh, I think it helped a, a great deal, uh, in, in, uh, keeping the. Minimal, I guess I'll call it nuisance flooding, localized flooding, uh, just a few inches of water in some areas. Uh, so, um, so great job to everybody, uh, in preparing for the storms and, and, uh, and we. You know, we had some, some minimal damage in that. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, Parks and Rec Director, um, Armando Solis.
I just wanted to remind everybody that you can go to our city website to, um, download the information, uh, for COVID testing. Uh, tomorrow I do have a meeting with the county to discuss vaccines. Um, I will keep the city manager informed of, uh, the information I find out at that meeting. Um, I'd like to thank Jackie and her group, uh, for the Winter Bird Festival and keeping these events going throughout the COVID year. Um, and thank our sponsors that are allowing us to have this event, uh, the. The cow waste, the Autobots Society. Um, it, it's really important, uh, that they're acknowledged. Uh, to allow us to have this event again. So I want to thank my staff, um, and thank Public Works for the work that we did. Last week during that storm, uh, we worked really well together, um, and I appreciate all of our staff working as hard as they did during that storm. That's it.
Thank you. Human Resource, Human Resources Director Stephanie Van Steen.
I have no update this evening. Thank you.
All right. Community Development Director Craig Hoffman.
Nothing further tonight, everyone. Thank you so much and good night.
City Attorney Harriet Steiner.
Good evening. I just wanted to note, um, that the legislature is back in session and one of the first things that they did. Um, is to extend protections for eviction through July of 2021. And that's the first of the bills that we're expecting, um, that they will pass that deal with the ongoing COVID crisis.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh, City Clerk Tina Hubert?
Uh, nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, and our, uh, our administrative assistant Rose Rodacker.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay, very good, very good. Mr. Mayor, that concludes staff comments.
Thank you, sir. We will now move on to comments by city council members, future agenda items. We will start with our Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Uh, very brief. First of all, thank you for all the staff doing an excellent job during that COVID-19. Thank you for all the department, all the staff. Now, the other thing I also like to thank you for the citizen, whoever bring any, a written comment, uh, any of. Any other comment, any agenda item. That's a very important for me. To any comment regarding any project, uh, I, I take very seriously. So thank you for bringing any comment to any agenda item. And I also like to congratulation to the new. Committee member, my wife, Amy Sandu. And I also like to congratulation to the. Uh, Commission on Aging, Bob Belson. Again, I like to thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Councilmember Papinow.
Yeah, I, uh, was able to, uh, virtually attend the Humboldt County hearing. And hats off to everybody because it's not often that you have a judge in a criminal court. Within the first minute, uh, after calling it to order. Uh, signal his, uh, decision without taking any testimony or seeing any evidence. It's pretty phenomenal. So. Uh, to the city manager, Chief Kalanowski, Lieutenant Small, the DA, the sheriff's office. And the public's overwhelming, uh, response. Thanks to everybody. Uh, it just, uh, it made it an automatic for him. That's all.
Thank you, Councilor Papinow. Councilmember Vandenberg.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Papinow. I, I agree wholeheartedly with what you said. I, I didn't have an opportunity to, uh, you know, watch it at all, but. The community. Uh, concern, everything that everybody did, the online petitions, letters, emails. I got a lot of emails about that topic. It was, it was a really good thing to see, especially after, uh. Pretty much a year of bad news. Uh, I'd also like to, you know. Thank all the restaurants and the, and the people in the community that helped the fallen officers, this, uh, you know, locally. Uh, it was great to see that, you know, a restaurant, local restaurant, even with all the struggles they have, were willing to help. Family of a fallen officer and, uh, within hours, they sold out of all of their food. So I applaud, you know, our, our community for that. And I'd also like to thank the staff. I asked, uh, the past week on some of the warrants from the previous. Uh, packet and one of the items was a disputed charge. So. It was $697 and I just like to thank you that, you know, and the citizens know that the staff is watching where our money goes. Uh, they received the money back and that's, uh. A bit tedious maybe, but it's a job well done. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Vandenberg. Councilmember Lozano.
Yeah, I, I want to also thank the community for, um, their, um. Engagement in the sexually violent predator, uh, issue. And thank you for, uh, the staff and, and Councilman Papinow for, for, uh, being online and, and watching that. Uh, also, I think Mayor Farmer was on. Uh, so yeah, you, you know, good work by the community, good work by staff. Uh, thank you. Uh, Chief Kalanowski for being on top of that and writing a, a great, uh, great letter to the court that, that was forwarded to us. It was very, very well done. Um, congratulations to Ms. Sandu also. Uh, glad she's back on the beautification committee. She does such a wonderful job always. Uh, and she has to, uh, she has to live with, uh, Vice Mayor Sandu. So, so we get her more props for that. And then, uh, also congratulations to Mr. Wilson also. I think he'll do a great job like I mentioned. And, uh, I will, lastly, um, just, just to wrap it up, thank you to all the staff for all the hard work you do. You know, sometimes I tell Mr. Heinz this the, the other day, sometimes, um, having five bosses is a tough job. And, uh, we do appreciate the work you do and the time you take with us and responding to emails and. And, uh, and, you know, and, and just generally working with the public. So thank you all so much. Have a great evening and, uh, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Lozano. And I would like to just echo to what, uh, my other council members have said about the, uh, the, uh, Joshua Cooley, um, hearing. Just have to say, super impressed with the whole community to come together in such a fast manner. You know, this wasn't, we had such support from, you know, and, and just to thank, you know, uh, everybody, Superintendent Tully, uh. Someone in Jim Cooper, our sheriff's, sheriff's office, um, Senator Eggman, all our higher, uh, elected officials above, uh, the Steve Galt who. Who wrote letters and supported us and were on the, on the hearing, uh, live with us. Um, and, uh, you know, the, the community just, it, it was not one thing that did it though. It was not one person that. That pulled all the weight on that. It was, it was a collaborative effort. I could really sense in the, in the, uh, the judge's voice that he was. Impre- I mean, he was just, um. You, you know, the outpourings of opposition was huge and like you could just tell and it immediately right out of the gate, as Councilmember Papinow said. He has already said, you know, he was, uh, you know, leaning towards dismissing it. And even when the, uh. The opposing side really pushed, uh, their point, he, he just, uh, he stood firm and he, it was a good victory for the community of Galt. And I think all the staff are working so hard, Mr. Heinz and our city attorney and, uh, Ms. Mendoza. Um, uh, everybody who's involved. I know there's so many, I can't even name them all, but everybody had a piece in this. So many people, especially the community. Thank you all. For your hard work on this and, um. It wouldn't have been a success without everybody involved. So thank you on that. Um, also too, um, when Mr. Kalanowski mentioned the funeral for Mr., uh, or Officer Gibson. Uh, is tomorrow and, um, I wanted to show off this cool little sticker. I don't know if you guys can see this, but. Um, somebody made these and it has a rendering of. somebody made these and it has a rendering of the officer. It's actually, it's not a real photograph. It's actually like a drawn image of him and his dog. So somebody gave me that today. It's pretty cool. So again, our prayers to his family for his sacrifice. And, and then lastly, just everybody be safe out there. Do what you can to protect yourselves during this pandemic. And I think that's all I have tonight. So I wish everybody a good evening and take care. Meeting adjourned.